It is six sixteen PM and with the quorum of the board present, I call this meeting of Leander ISD.
Where did you call it?
Oh, my bad. Sorry. This is all new and different here. It's really throwing me off, right? Cindy, we're ready for your... Thank you. Here.
Anna Smith.
Here.
Christine Mauer.
Thank you, Cindy. I didn't mean to steal your part like that. It is six sixteen PM and with the quorum of the board present, I call this meeting of Leander ISD Board of Trustees to order. We're going to go ahead and start with our Pledge of Allegiance, and it is my pleasure to introduce Kalia Handy Bosma to lead us in the pledges tonight. Kalia is a rising junior at Leander High School and a proud member of the Leander High School Band. Kalia has benefited greatly from her membership in the Leander High School Black Heritage Club and other student-led organizations. A frequent visitor to LISD board meetings, Kalia takes a special interest in educational policy and student voice. She also enjoys participating in her church youth group and is proficient in several circus arts. Earlier this year, Kalia completed the Austin Half Marathon while juggling three balls and is now training to run and juggle in the Austin Marathon in February of 2024. We are so impressed with all of your accomplishments and thank you for leading us in the pledges tonight.
Please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
I'm going to change some order of items tonight. Vice President Smith and Secretary Maurer have requested a brief closed meeting, and I am honoring this request. So at this time at six nineteen, we are going to convene and close meeting under the authority of the Texas Open Meetings Act, Sections 551.071 for consultation with board's attorney and 551.074, discussion regarding the duties of public officers. Any action taken in closed will be addressed in open.
The board is now taking up the Citizens Common Agenda item, which is time set aside during this meeting to hear from the whole community, which can include a wide audience of the entire LISD family. Still, remember that there are other ways you can communicate with the board. You can send them an email, come to a board cafe, or you can just tell them that you'd like to chat sometime. The district believes the Leander family thrives when we ensure a welcoming, safe, and caring environment. Board operating procedures and BED, local specified guidelines, so it is important that you have read them before you speak. The board wants to hear from everyone, but still asks you to be mindful of your conduct. And the example you are choosing to set when presenting complex information, if you are presenting material that only certain high schoolers may encounter, remember that school children of all ages may participate in board meetings, either by watching them online or you might even come see some of us in the audience. When the board president calls your number, remember, watch the timer and focus your remarks to the time allotted. We know it can be hard, but please conclude your comments when you hear the chime.
Thank you. And per our board operating procedures, we're going to hear from our students, our LISD students first, and we will start with speaker number one.
Thank you, Dr. Gearing, school board members, teachers and staff, and the police here to protect us. Today, I'd like to thank the board for proposing the recent bond package and the public for trusting the district to use the money wisely. As a Leander High School student and a proud member of the Leander Band, I have seen firsthand the benefits as tight budgets have been able to be loosened. Flood damage to the school has been addressed, and the band now has been able to replace fiber phones and marimbas, order new sticks and mallets, and replace worn-out lockers and other equipment. LISD is once again one of the top districts in Texas and nationally for band, with thousands of highly competitive students. The entire student body also benefits. While music is its own subject of study, it also has important educational benefits as learners are better able to understand complex math. Band teaches hard work, discipline, the ability to work with others, and resilience in the face of adversity. Across this district, thousands of students have been braving 105-degree heat to perfect our music and perform at a high level, and it is thanks to a district that believes in us and in the value of our programs that we believe in our own abilities. This is just one example of why funding for quality public schools is so important. LISD is known for its incredible band programs. Band draws families to Leander, Cedar Park, and all of our fast-growing communities. In the end, all of us benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker One. We'll move to Speaker Two.
I'm Adrian Delakia. My mom serves on this school board, and she has said multiple times that she does not want me to come to board meetings and speak to avoid being the target of hate. But here I am because this school district is in desperate need of more student voice. I have heard a lot of lies and hurtful things about my mom, my dad, even me and my brothers. But tonight, I just wanted everyone to know how proud of I am of my mom and my entire family. She is always thinking of students, teachers, and public education and always has the district's best interest at heart. Sometimes it's gathering books for leaf, collecting school supplies and donations, talking to people at the Capitol about our schools and the programs we love. My mom doesn't just do school board at these meetings, but she also goes out of her way and sacrifices time with my family and her free time. Those of you who seem to take pride in attacking my mom may disagree with what she stands for, like making sure all students and teachers have what they need to be successful, caring for the students that need it the most, and always working and volunteering to support public education. But you obviously don't know anything about who my mom is and how much she gives of herself to help lift up and empower other people. Sometimes all the negativity makes me really frustrated and sad and at times really angry. But that's not who we are. We are a family that reads books together, goes on hikes together, and plays Mario Party together. And we volunteer together. School board members are volunteers. They are real people with real feelings. They are executive directors of nonprofits, daughters of elderly parents, and most important to me, really amazing moms.
Thank you, Speaker Two. Speaker Number Three.
Got it. Okay. I'm a student over here at Vannegrave High School, and I just want to start by thanking all the board members who actively advocated for a change of location for these meetings so it's accessible to different kinds of students. I think one thing that we've overall lost is a student voice, just as Adrian mentioned, but I'm very glad to see that we're getting it back slowly. I think that my main reason to come here was just to speak and advocate for more refocus toward like board members who are connected to LISD and the system. While we appreciate the work of each and every board member, it's kind of hard for one to speak when they don't necessarily have a direct everyday connection to any of the schools in the district. Having district involvement is quintessential to having all the students in the district's best interests at heart. And as a student myself, I love being able to see adults such as Dr. Gloria Delakia be at robotics programs and such and be involved in individual schools in the district. I hope to speak for the entire student body when I say we appreciate all the work the board has done for us and we hope to see it prosper further. Thank you.
Thank you, student. Speaker Number Three. We're going to move to Speaker Number Four.
Good evening and thank you for allowing me to speak. It brings me no joy to do this, but I must bring it up because it is something I can no longer endure. I look at you, adults, a shining example of what we should be. Excuse me. And yet I stand by... Excuse me, sorry. I stand by as you isolate one of your own. Today... I'm sorry. Sorry, I will make this quick. You have isolated one of your own, Mr. Paul Gautier, because he sexually, because you, president, have sexually harassed him. You are supposed to be a shining example, and yet you have isolated one of your own. That should not and will not be tolerated. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Four. We're going to move on to Speaker Five. All right, we're going to move on to speaker number six.
Good evening, Madam President and Board of Trustee members. As an educator in this district, I wanted to take time to thank you for your commitment. Over these past few years, I have had the pleasure of working and interacting with many of you. Whenever I have had these chances, you have been thoughtful, reflective, and open. And some of you have done your fair share of noodling over ideas. I have watched many of you sit in district committee meetings, listening intently to the teachers, parents, and community members, gathering all feedback and reactions. I have received thoughtful and kind responses to voiced concerns. I have heard you ask to hear from students when they are present in the room, making sure they are the first to be heard. And I have seen you at school functions watching our amazing students perform and show off. It is no easy task to guide and steer a district like this one, one that is continually growing and diversifying, yet you seemingly do it with grace and care. Teaching is not for the faint of heart. However, knowing that there are supportive and devoted individuals on this board who are here to serve all students makes my job easier. So thank you for your dedication.
Thank you. Now we have speaker number seven.
I think most of you have heard the adage, actions speak louder than words. You'll hear many words today. You've heard some, you're going to hear more from commentators and maybe a board member. But let's talk about actions. Six of us, six of our seven board members have been longtime volunteers and have dedicated years of service to our district. Their actions are a benefit for our students, teachers, and staff. Thank you. I'd like to focus on the actions of my wife, the board president. She has volunteered in service of our district for almost twenty years. She's served on P T As. She's served to help build our education foundation. She has served as an officer on booster clubs. She has served on the school board. Over these years, her actions have been to protect and provide for the best interests of students, teachers, and staff. Her record is unimpeachable with facts. In her day job, my wife runs a nonprofit to shelter and educate single mothers and their kids. She enables them to obtain a college degree while getting their kids ready for their academic careers, all this to break cycles of poverty for some of our most vulnerable. These are her actions in near twenty years of service. They speak louder than words. They speak a thousand times louder than lies. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Seven. Now speaker number eight.
Hi, my name is Joel Berkew. I'm a parent of one child now in the district. I had another child that just graduated, and I really appreciate the board members for showing up to the graduation and congratulating my son graduating. And he's going off to Rochester Institute of Technology, so I'm a rec right now. I'm also a member of All In L I S D, as you can see on the shirt. One of the things that we've worked tirelessly for and I think have been successful is getting things like propositions to help pay for pay increases for our teachers, and also help with the school bonds, which really paid for new facilities, new schools, et cetera. I just want to come here today and just really thank the school board members as well. You know, I don't think people realize this is a non-paid position. You guys are here till after midnight every single night, or sorry, every board meeting as well. You work, yeah, not every single night, but you do work tirelessly for our students, and you've worked tirelessly for years. And like the previous speaker said, many of you were volunteers before you actually got here too and served your time. It's nice to see you out there in the schools and the communities, interacting with our kids. So what I would just say is keep up the good work. Unfortunately, with boards that you get a lot of criticism, but I think it's good when the community comes out and give you praise as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you, speaker number eight. Now speaker number nine.
Good evening. I wanted to come out tonight to, first of all, congratulate Gloria for becoming a master trustee. It's a very big deal, and I'm very proud of her, and I'm proud of the work that she does for our school board. I'm proud of most of the people sitting on this board tonight, and I want to thank you. I saw almost all of you at the backpack attack this past weekend, almost all of you, except for one. But thank you for what you give to this board. Thank you for your time. I know that you're volunteers, and I speak for many, many parents. Thank you for what you do for our teachers. Thank you for what you do for our children.
Thank you, speaker nine. Now speaker number ten.
On the evening of May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, during what purported to be but was not an executive closed session of a meeting of the Leander I S D school board, school board, board member Gloria Gonzalez-Delacchia sexually harassed complainant by stating the following, and you know it's true. "I was wondering how your wife can appreciate you with such small genitalia." I mean, how can you satisfy her with small genitalia? How in the world can she be with someone with small genitalia? Seriously, how in the world can she be with someone with small pecuano," indicating diminutive with his putting her index finger and thumb pinched closely together. Board policy, B B F, local governs this board's ethics. Each of you has pledged the following. "As a member of the board, I shall promote the best interests of the district as a whole, and to that end shall adhere to the following ethical standards. I will focus my attention on fulfilling the board's responsibility, goal-setting, policymaking, and evaluation. I will strive to be an example to students, faculty, and community by upholding the ethical principles of the district and the standards of propriety of our district. I will accord others the respect. If the allegations in trustee Gautier's complaint are true, tell me how board members, how can you remain on the board in light of the ethical standards you pledged to uphold? If the allegations are true, you are not an example to our students. You are an example of what they should not be."
Thank, thank you, speaker number ten. I'm going to take a point of personal privilege to address comments directed at me as false allegations. These claims were reported to L P D, and that case was closed due to lacking merit. Next speaker, number eleven. This is a meeting of the board. This is a meeting of the board. We cannot have those disruptions. This is a warning. This is a disruption of a government meeting. Next speaker is speaker eleven.
Good evening. I came here tonight to express some grave concern that has been mounting really for over a year now about your oath that you take when you take elected office. That oath is to represent all of us. And for a long time, I and many others have come here to express concerns about things that are being done to our children, and the response is to attack us personally. As a representative, you're supposed to represent all of us. That should be a concern to you. When you attack representative or member Gautier, you're attacking all of us who support him as well. That is not what you took an oath to do. Finally, I want to point out, I noticed on your agenda tonight, you have an item number six A one where you're going to discuss the student code of conduct. I find that kind of ironic because of what we're talking about was allegedly happening and on May twenty-fifth. You represent an example to my children. To talk about the students codes of conduct, maybe we should evaluate our own code of conduct.
Thank you, speaker eleven. We will move to speaker number twelve.
Thank you, school board members, Dr. Gearing, L I S D teachers and staff, and the police officers here to protect us. Today I'd like to discuss the use and abuse of police and other administrative processes to promote and defend bullying in schools and in larger society. Though our generation seems to have a better handle on racism, sexism, and homophobia than older generations, sadly, we still have a number of kids and adults who expect to be able to bully. When teachers, staff, and fellow students try to intervene to stop bullying, they are called groomers or Marxists, and even hit blatantly with false police reports. Upstanders among teachers, staff, and students are the last line of defense for vulnerable students. We must not allow people to abuse the law and administrative processes. We must not allow them to declare open season on teachers, staff, and students who stand up to bullies. There was a time when racists or homophobes could use the threat of the law as a weapon against vulnerable people. This country has a thousand Emmett Till's, a thousand Matthew Shepherds. When accusations are made publicly and when schools and police find they are false, meritless, unsubstantiated, the public deserves to know. We need transparency when adults make false police reports or cause their kids to do the same. We can't let open season on upstanders to take place, or it'll be open season for the rest of us. We're all God's children, and we need to love our neighbors and treat each other with respect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, speaker number twelve. Now speaker thirteen.
Hi, I'm Jean Swart. It's my first night, and I'm doing thirteen. This should be fun. Hello, welcome, Madam President and board members. I am a proud mom of two kids, two, one just graduated, L I S D, Hookum, she's going to U T, and my son is a Timber Wolf. And I just want to thank all of you for your help and your guidance in getting him there. And I prepared some brief remarks. So I just want to shine a light on you guys. You guys are an amazing school board. You guys are the folks that work behind the scenes. You make important decisions that affect our schools, my children's schools, and our children's education. The one thing that really stands out about our school board is your strong commitment to equality and inclusivity. You believe that every child, no matter where they come from, should have the same opportunities to learn and succeed. They work hard to make sure that the resources are distributed fairly so that all students have what they need to thrive. You guys also understand the importance of embracing our differences. They want every student to feel welcome and valued, no matter their background or abilities. They're dedicated to creating an environment where everyone feels like they can belong and achieve their best. So let's take a moment to appreciate these wonderful board members for their dedication to making our schools fair, inclusive, and a place where all students can reach their full potential. Thank you, school board members, for your efforts to create a brighter future for our children and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker thirteen. Speaker fourteen, you're up.
Hello, my name is Alexis, and this will be my sixth year in the district. I am All In for L I S D, and I wanted to come out tonight to express my heartfelt gratitude toward the board of trustees. L I S D's convocation was yesterday, and our theme for this year is there is no place like home. I truly have found my home in this district. When my husband and I moved here five years ago, I didn't know anyone, but I found my community through my school, which expanded as I met educators across the district. I genuinely feel like this is where I belong. A lot of that is because of the work you all do. Being a teacher is hard, but you all don't get nearly enough credit for your incredible dedication as well. You have your own personal communities, you have families, jobs, responsibilities outside of this work, and yet you show up to school events to cheer on your kids and all of the kids in L I S D. You stay late at board meetings discussing policy, finances, and complicated issues while taking into account the many diverse perspectives in our district. It's impossible to make a perfect decision, but you weigh the information and try to do right by our students, and for that I am forever grateful. Yesterday, our fearless board president gave a beautiful speech about how this work truly takes a combination of head, heart, and courage, and you all model that for us every day. I feel lucky to know that it is you who have the backs of our students, teachers, and families. Leaders like you are why I am so passionate about being All In for L I S D. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker. Speaker number fifteen.
Lions, not sheep. This weekend, I saw the play by Matilda at Zilker Park. A little girl was born to a couple who didn't really want to be bothered with a kid and didn't want a daughter, so called her boy. She corrected him every time. "I am a girl." She loved to read and would read books upon books weekly. She attended a school that turned out to be very demeaning, unkind, abusive, to say the least. However, she had a very supportive teacher that saw such goodness in her and believed in her. Despite the abuse, she too had endured. Matilda was spoken to extremely harsh. She spoke truth, often to the lies spoken as she was targeted by the headmaster. As the play progressed, I felt extremely uncomfortable by the way the students and teachers were spoken to, the harsh ways they were disciplined without warrant for the discipline. Many truths were beginning to be revealed, and the headmaster became much more aggressive with her attempts to abuse the children. They sat under the oppression for so long, as sheep just being led by the ruling headmaster. As the truth was exposed by Matilda, the lion, the students began to rise up, speak up, and would no longer tolerate the abuse. If I could have stood up to applaud at the scene, I would have. The reason I share this experience is to pointedly address the abuse our community has been under by our currently ruling school board. The comments brought to the light this evening must be held accountable for, and disciplinary action needs to be taken immediately. The way this situation is dealt with needs to be a wake-up call to our school faculty, staff, and families that assault in this any fashion will be how it will be dealt with. Will it be ignored, or will disciplinary and legal action be taken? Matilda did not deserve any of the abuse she endured. She was not asking for it by confronting the wrongful abuse happening all around her.
Thank you, speaker fifteen. Now speaker sixteen.
You know, I recently heard a story, and I'm not sure it rises to the level of some of the conspiracy theories that are out there, but I thought you should know. Three guys were sitting around a table, and one of the guys got a little braggy and said, you know, I think I'm the fastest guy on the planet. And the other two guys were skeptical, and so they went out to the track, and they measured it all up, and they sent all the records off to the Guinness Book of World Records. And they're walking off, and the second guy says, you know, you can tell, I'm tall. I think I'm the tallest guy on the planet. So again, they measure him, document it, pictures, everything, send it off to the Guinness Book of World Records. And the third guy, he says, a little sheepishly, he goes, I actually think I might have the smallest penis on the planet. And so drop trowel, measure it up, and send it off to Guinness. And the first guy gets his notification back a couple of weeks later. Congratulations, you're the fastest human on the planet. We'd like to congratulate, awesome. Another week goes by, and the second guy gets his notification. Congratulations, you're the tallest guy on the planet. And he's so excited, and the third guy's a little nervous, finally gets his notification back, and he's not sure.
I want to start by acknowledging the simple truth that a solid public school system is the foundation of a thriving community. The women on this board know that, and they act on that every day. They've put in countless hours of work as volunteers, as public ed advocates at the Capitol, and by attending long board meetings even before they were on the dais. They attended these meetings not as hecklers or trolls, but as witnesses to the immense effort that goes into running a school district. Each of these women takes the opportunity to celebrate our successes as a district and cheer on our community at commencement ceremonies, sporting events, and performances. They recognize all the ways our students and staff can achieve, and they shine light on excellence. And for that, I am grateful. Tonight, I want to extend a quick congratulations to Gloria, who has dedicated over a decade to our district. She recently completed the Leadership Tasby and earned the designation of Master Trustee. It's always such a pleasure to watch Gloria and our other board members interact with our students and teachers. It is clear that they revere what happens in our school buildings, as they should, because what teachers and staff do every day is worthy of reverence.
Thank you, Speaker 17. Next, Speaker 18.
I just want to say thank you for volunteering your time to work so hard to support our students and our district. I appreciate that so many of you attend community events and really get to know the people of LISD. And for those of us that see you there, it is evident that you truly, truly care. I'm about to start my sixth year in the district, and I also just want to say that I see such a positive impact that you all have had in the time that I've been here. I was just telling my new team member yesterday about how the district has changed for the better in just the short time that I've been here. You all have made such a concerted effort to support all the students so that everyone can achieve success in LISD. To those of you that are still on the board from my first years, you were always the best of them, and I am thankful that you still hold your seats. You've demonstrated integrity in the face of some of the toughest years in education, and I've seen your thoughts and opinions evolve as you seek to understand the various perspectives of those in the district. To those of you that were more recently elected, I'm hopeful that you will continue to move the district in the positive direction that we're going that values everyone. Please remember that though not all of the voters are here, we are all out here, and we support you. I know that your volunteer job is hard. I do not envy you. I just want you to remember that we're here for you, we support you, we value your heart, your time, the risks that you're taking just by holding this position. And then I just want to say, as a fine arts teacher, thank you for including everyone in convocation. That was awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker 18. Next, Speaker 19.
Hi, I'm here as a community member, parent, and I also happen to be a former LISD school psychologist. Yes, one of the many psychologists, Leander ISD employees. I know that was a problem with some last spring, but that's not why I'm here. I'm here in support of our incredibly hardworking educators and support staff. We're losing the best one by one, and we must do something. I want to encourage all to unite in a way that shows respect and support for those who put in the real work with our kids each day. There's a very vocal minority sucking precious time, resources, and positive energy out of our district in their efforts to tear down public education. We must come together and be louder. We need to allow the focus of our educators to be on preparing our district's extremely wide range of students with vastly differing needs for the future. We know to do this, our district needs adequate state funding. We have some board members who are amazing advocates at the legislative level, and we need lots more of that. What we don't need is a board member advocating for school vouchers. I do believe our trustees are doing the best they can locally with the cards they've been dealt from the state level. In summary, trust our educators, appreciate and value our educators, advocate for our educators in all the ways you can, and positive outcomes will follow. Thanks.
Thank you, Speaker 19. Next, Speaker 20.
Hi, my history with Gloria began when she had her husband come and harass me personally. At the time, I was a councilman's wife. Several of Gloria's posts was given to my husband by ex-trustee Alexis Grimes. That's how he got those posts, Gloria. My husband commented on her post about how irrational and emotional she is, and because of what she posts, we should be concerned about how she would govern. She took it to a level that if you criticize her, you're racist and misogynist. My husband is a first-generation American of Mexican descent. I was holding campaign signs, and she encouraged her husband to harass me in front of others by accusing my husband of going after her children. My husband's post had nothing to do with their children, but with the state of her mind. The post is still on Facebook. Unfortunately for her husband, a man stood up for me, yelled at her husband, and told him loudly, and I'm just quoting, I'm not just quoting what he said, "Stop starting shit. Everything was fine until you two showed up here. If you don't want to be nice, go somewhere else." She ran and left her husband behind. What a way to support your man by humiliating him and then abandoning him when your narrative is resisted. Gloria, you are the bully that marginalizes, heckles, and discriminates, and goes after family members that didn't run for office. I truly hope that you can find the courage you have been lacking and apologize to Mr. Gautier and his family and your family so the district...
Thank you, Speaker Number 20. Next, Speaker Number 21. 21. This is a meeting of the board. We can't have disruptions like that. This is a government meeting. There's a disruption outside. I'm going to go ahead and take us into a five-minute recess so our security can talk to everyone. It is currently 7:07, and the board is returning to open session. Speaker 21, sorry.
Attention, parents who have children attending LIC or any public education system, for that matter. Each family has their own set of values and beliefs. You must decide what is best for your children, what to be looking for when school starts. I highly recommend you read over the school-student handbook. When was the last time you actually read it? What are you signing off on? Two, beware the get-to-know-you form. Your child's homeroom teacher hands out. What are they asking of your child? Three, is your child given a psych exam during their English class? Yes, this is a psych exam. Without my permission, I was given to my child. Oh, and the computers and iPads. Do you know your child's sign and info? Do you look to see what kind of assignments they are receiving? Have you looked onto your child's teacher's Google page? Do you know the direction the school district is moving into with technology? Do you know that our children are cheating due to this technology, and the teachers know it? Be aware of the assignments what teachers are giving to your child. Here's the Tinder assignment that my child received during seventh-grade English class. And yes, it says Tinder on this. A character who was obsessed with finding a boyfriend or girlfriend, a Tinder account. Duh. Let kids be kids.
Thank you, Speaker 21. We're going to move on to Speaker 22.
I want to thank you, Board, for coming here tonight and, you know, giving your time to the community. I just want to say how floored I am by all these good Christian women of God coming up here and using foul language in a public forum. It's mind-numbing how so many women can stand against one of our school board leaders, against a man who I wouldn't trust alone with my teen daughter for five seconds. I think anybody in this room who's been around him long enough knows you shouldn't trust anybody around this person. He's nefarious and untrustworthy, and I think the fact that people are coming up here and taking sides with him is really disturbing in our community. To the person who said, "When you move against Paul, you move against us," well, when you work against the women of the school board, you work against the rest of us, because we all stand with them, and there's more of us, and there are of you siding with number seven. I think that this person has certainly made a joke and a mockery of our school board meetings when he wasn't on the board, and certainly comes to our school board meetings with complete disdain. I think it's a shame that you come here and try to act like a leader, but we never see you in the community. You're not here. You're not present. You don't even engage. I don't even think you're blinking right now, and I think it's very sad that you come here creating such divisiveness, but we haven't seen anything from you. When are you going to be a leader, Paul? When are you going to step up and go into the schools, go to the meetings, go to the clubs, and show us what your leadership skills are? We haven't seen it. You come here looking like you've Xanax-ed yourself or something, and you look like you're catatonic. You only come here, it seems, to talk to the people who are in your corner, and you never go out into the community to show us what your leaderships are. So for everybody who supports you, lead. Lead by example.
Thank you, Speaker 22. Next is Speaker 23. This is a meeting of the board. Please do not disrupt the board meeting. If we do, we'll have to recess again. Please do not disrupt the board meeting. Speaker 23, whenever you're ready.
Madam President, Board Members, Dr. Gearing, as a former school board trustee, I understand that there is a tremendous level of servant leadership that you have to display every day, such as going to the leaf state of the district event and working with community partners, attending the backpack attack, providing resources to hundreds of our families across the district, and most recently participating in convocation, celebrating our return to the next school year. As a teacher, parent, and resident of this district, I want to speak to you about how you can best continue to support me and my students. Make good decisions. Even in the face of adversity, scrutiny, and aggression, make good decisions. Note that I said that I didn't say make perfect decisions, just good ones. Simply put, a good decision includes the people at the table. Specifically, it allows those who would be most affected by that decision to have a voice in what happens. A bad decision seeks to silence and exclude others, particularly those who never had a voice in the first place. Creating a DEI policy, community-based accountability, reconsidering school closures were all good decisions by this board. My students, my daughter, need those types of decisions. I'm excited for this school year, and I have full faith and confidence in this board and its president. Thank you. Oh, and Anna's amazing.
Thank you, Speaker 23. Next, Speaker 24.
Thank you all for your service. I particularly want to thank the teachers, the librarians, the volunteers, the staff that helped the teachers. We're going to have a wonderful school year, and we appreciate the trustees and all the work that you do. I want to particularly raise a couple of issues. One, I witnessed the husband of a school trustee be physically assaulted by a conservative extremist, physically assaulted, and he did nothing, nothing about it. He didn't touch the man, he walked away. I wish I had that type of patience. But what we've endured over the last few years is misrepresentation, misleading information, misinformation for the 2021 bonds, for the 2022 financial propositions, for the school trustee candidates. It's gone on and on. And that's why we don't trust some people. And the voters have learned who they can trust. I also lastly want to remember, if you're LGBTQ trans in this community, it gets better. It gets better. We had someone north of us commit suicide. We can't have bullying going on in our schools. It gets better. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker 24. Next, Speaker 25. Hold on, I don't believe you're Speaker 25. You're not signed up. Can you give us one second, please? If you can please hold your comment until we can figure this out. Please do not disrupt the Board meeting. Speaker 23, whenever you're ready.
Madam President, Board members, Dr. Gearing. As a former school board trustee, I understand that there is a tremendous level of servant leadership that you have to display every day, such as going to the leaf state of the district event and working with community partners, attending the backpack attack, providing resources to hundreds of our families across the district, and most recently participating in convocation, celebrating our return to the next school year. As a teacher, parent, and resident of this district, I want to speak to you about how you can best continue to support me and my students. Make good decisions. Even in the face of adversity, scrutiny, and aggression, make good decisions. Note that I said that I didn't say make perfect decisions, just good ones. Simply put, a good decision includes the people at the table. Specifically, it allows those who would be most affected by that decision to have a voice in what happens. A bad decision seeks to silence and exclude others, particularly those who never had a voice in the first place. Creating a DEI policy, community-based accountability, reconsidering school closures were all good decisions by this Board. My students, my daughter, needs those types of decisions. I'm excited for this school year and I have full faith and confidence in this Board and its president. Thank you. Oh, and Anna's amazing.
Thank you, Speaker 23. Next, Speaker 24.
Thank you all for your service. I particularly want to thank the teachers, the librarians, the volunteers, the staff that helped the teachers. We're going to have a wonderful school year and we appreciate the trustees and all the work that you do. I want to particularly raise a couple of issues. One, I witnessed the husband of a school trustee be physically assaulted by a conservative extremist, physically assaulted, and he did nothing, nothing about it. He didn't touch the man, he walked away. I wish I had that type of patience. But what we've endured over the last few years is misrepresentation, misleading information, misinformation for the 2021 bonds, for the 2022 financial propositions, for the school trustee candidates. It's gone on and on. And that's why we don't trust some people. And the voters have learned who they can trust. I also lastly want to remember, if you're LGBTQ trans in this community, it gets better. It gets better. We had someone north of us commit suicide. We can't have bullying going on in our schools. It gets better. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker 24. Next, Speaker 25. Hold on, I don't believe you're Speaker 25. You're not signed up. Can you give us one second, please? If you can please hold your comment until we can figure this out. Our next speaker is Speaker 25.
Man, it's been a while. I'm not sure if this was intentional along with the last minute venue change, but nothing will stop us from exposing all of you guys. And for the supporters trying to justify or deny that this occurred, trustee Delacchia already admitted to saying these things when she was questioned by Leander PD. Now ask yourself this, if the roles were reversed and five men said these things to one woman, I was wondering how your wife can appreciate you with such small genitalia? How in the world can your wife appreciate you with such small genitalia? Or, I'm sorry, how in the world could your wife, someone with such small paquano genitalia? Is that what you're doing with your hair? Because the color looks terrible, just wanted you to know. I mean, how immature is this? This woman is 40 years old and she's acting like a teenager. Those were her words. And what is her justification? She was retaliating for something that he said as a citizen in March 2022. Must I remind you, you are an elected official and remember the days you used to go after Councilman Chavez and Kelly and you were so horrible to them? The difference is they didn't do anything illegal, Gloria. You sexually harassed and bullied trustee Gautier during a closed session meeting. Did I miss something? By law, you can only discuss what's on the agenda. Was his genitalia on the agenda? I prayed that you guys would have some integrity left and ask her to resign. Instead, you promoted her to Board President. No one is above the law, not even the ones in this room lying and avoiding speaking to the investigators.
I'm going to take a pointed personal privilege to address comments directed at me as false allegations. As I never spoke to Leander PD, these claims were reported to Leander Police Department and the case was closed due to lacking merit. Next, our next speaker. We're going to go to speaker number, we're actually going to go back to speaker number five. This is a student speaker. We usually don't go back in order, but we really want to prioritize our student voice. And we have a student, so student, if you can please come to the podium.
Hello, my name is Brenda Ramachandran and I just came here to talk about math. Anyways, I'm going to third grade at Laura Welsh Bush Elementary School. First of all, I want to give a shout out to my home campus because it is actually the best elementary school in the world. Second thing I want to bring up with the new school board is about LISD's new math program that was part of the bond election, you know, where all of our parents gave a lot of money to LISD. My number one favorite thing about school is our Math Pitaphlon Club. I love all the math games. This year, our school got a bronze trophy at tournament and another LISD school actually got the gold trophy. I think that you could make students and schools excited about math by encouraging them to start math pitaphlon teams at their elementary schools. Maybe you guys could ask the schools' PTAs to get some parent volunteers as coaches or send out a peach jar flyer. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Speaker number five. Thank you to the speakers that came out tonight. That was our last citizen comment and we're going to move over to item four, our consent agenda. Is there a motion to sever or approve the consent agenda?
I move the consent agenda items to be approved as presented.
Anna makes a motion. Trish seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven in favor, motion passes.
... themselves and their teaching? Whoa. That felt cool.
Kind of like Wizard of Oz.
Great. Whew, I'm going red now, it's getting really hot in here for a second. So anyway, we had both our regular ed teachers in those classrooms, but also our special education teachers working through the things that they do in especially our early learning childhood classrooms to create that environment that really allows the learning, the deep learning that we're looking for in Leander ISD to happen. I want to talk a little bit briefly about House Bill 3 and you're going to hear our legislative update in a little while. But this is one of those items that we're currently working on and so we wanted to just share a few details about that. A couple of the requirements here, one of those is an armed security officer at each campus in the district. Currently, we have SROs at all of our high school campuses and so we will be working to expand that program. We did take this to the Safety and Security Committee in July to get feedback from our law enforcement and our first responder partners to hear how they think through this and what would be best in their opinion for the district. We met this morning actually to talk about implementation details. Our team has been visiting with TEA officials and making sure that we truly understand what the requirements are. We will be applying for a good cause exception that exists in House Bill 3 due to two reasons, lack of funding initially and then the availability of personnel. So knowing that we have 48 schools in the district and currently only have eight SROs in the district, the possibility of us ramping that up by the implementation date of September 1 is just quite simply impossible. And that's why they put the exception clause into House Bill 3 and so we will be exercising that. We do, of course, plan to make that come into compliance as soon as possible and so we'll be working really diligently on this issue in the next several months. We also are going to carefully consider the level of training that we want for the security officers that we do end up hiring at our district to make sure that they meet the standards of excellence that our community expects. And we will be bringing more on these issues to you in the August 24 meeting. We wanted to just start to share some of these with you. This also requires in House Bill 3 active shooter training for all SROs at least once every four years. So of course, this depends on how we staff the armed personnel at every campus. We'll bring you more details on that as soon as we have them. House Bill 3 also requires the district to send discipline records and threat assessments to another district when a student moves. And so we're putting plans in place to make sure that we're in compliance with those requirements as well. Senate Bill 838 requires panic alert buttons in every classroom in the district. Through grant funding, we've already begun to work on this for implementation during this school year. We're in the final stages of testing and we'll move to training all of our staff shortly. TEA has through rule new facility standards now that are now effective. Those have additional safety and security requirements in them and we are working on meeting those standards through a combination of grants and then the bond funds that our community approved and we're very grateful for during the May election. And again, as I said, we'll bring a more robust conversation about these issues and others at our August 24th Board meeting. I want to spend a little time just giving you a quick update on the Cedar Park Fire. First, we want to say that we have families that were affected by this event from Reagan Elementary. We have 53 families who live in that apartment complex, 10 in affected buildings, and three who are devastated by the total loss of one of those apartment buildings. We also have 23 families from Stiles Middle School and one of those families was also affected by that total loss. We also have at least two employees that we know about at this time that were affected by this as well. We are reaching out to all of those families and our employees to make sure that we can provide them with any assistance that we can. We are very grateful for the Red Cross, for Hill Country Bible Church, for Hill Country Community Ministries, and for the PTA Clothes Closet who have all stepped up to help these families with the predicament that they find themselves in. I also want to say that we are extremely grateful for Cedar Park Fire Department, for the Cedar Park Police Department, for the 20 agencies that responded to this event, for Mayor Peniman Moran and City Manager Brenda Ivins, who did incredible work to make sure that this really extreme event was not much worse than it actually turned out. And of course, we'll bring you more information as we go and find out what our needs are. On a more positive note, we did have our backpack attack and we're again grateful to Hill Country Bible Church, to Leaf, and to many other organizations who partner with us annually on the backpack attack. And this serves a large number of families in our district, giving them backpacks, school supplies, shoes, access to books that they can take home for their children, as well as services that we provide through Child Nutrition Services, through Vision with the Lions Club, and a number of other entities who help us with this really great event. We did have convocation just yesterday, a really fantastic experience and we want to thank the students who showed up, put so much effort into showing us how we get to use our head, our heart, and our courage as we progress through this school year to really give them an outstanding experience. A huge shout out to Witch Glinda, our Leaf Executive Director, Colleen Brightman, for leading the exceptional work of Leaf and the many, many grants that they give out to our teachers that give them the possibility to innovate in their classrooms and in their departments. This funding really helps to seed great work in our district that comes all the way down to student learning. I want to give a huge shout out to our SCR team for putting convocation together. They did an incredible job of really thinking this through from start to finish. We're a very large district. This is a very challenging environment that we work in and they did a great job of really framing how we put head, heart, and courage together as we enter the 2324 year. I want to thank the Board members who showed up to support our staff. Our staff needs as much support as they can get and I really truly appreciate the work that you do every day to support our staff. And just as a final note, there's a group that doesn't often get a shout out and I want to give a huge shout out to our executive administrative assistants at the Central Office who do tireless work. They have to put up with cabinet members and a sometimes crazy superintendent and so they dread when I get new ideas, but they execute perfectly always. And so I want to give a huge shout out to those folks for the incredible and tireless work they've done all summer long to make sure that professional learning happens, to make sure that leadership retreat happened, to make sure that convocation happened, and just to keep us on track every single day to accomplish the work that we do. So thank you, Madam President. Happy to answer any questions that Board members might have.
No questions?
Good question. So regarding the security officers, is there going to be some indication of like, this is what they are expected to do and this is what they're not expected to do?
Yes, absolutely. So we will bring you more information at the August 24 meeting. That is one of the things that we talked about today. These positions will have job descriptions that will clearly outline what their roles and responsibilities are.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gearing. If there's no additional questions, we're going to move on to item 6A, Student Experience. Hello, Mr. Miller.
Good evening, Madam President, trustees, Dr. Gearing. That's really loud behind me, that's crazy. So I'm here tonight asking for action to approve our 2324 Student Code of Conduct. Each year, I bring this to you for approval. It is required by law for that approval. In legislative years, there are typically larger changes and significant changes to the code. This was one of those. And so I sent a change tracker alongside, that's my term, alongside of the code so that we could highlight the pieces that were changed. Now, I can, I, some of these changes, as we go through the year, are interaction with the code. So feedback from parents, feedback from campuses, feedback from students, feedback from our community on either trends or issues or concerns that are brought up with the code. You'll see some of those. I'll give you an example, the first one on the on the change tracker. We had some discrepancy whether school property, which was what was in the code previously, whether district property was included in that, and the code could be enforced. So I added district property in there because we can enforce the code across the board. It just kind of cleans up the language some. Also, we partner with Tasby for our policy, and they produce a model student code of conduct. So most of the, you'll see Tasby recommendations throughout the change tracker. And then there are other changes that that are reflected based on technology trends, for example, smart watches, Bluetooth speakers, those kinds of things. I'd be happy to go through each of these if you would like. Otherwise, I'll be happy to entertain questions.
Board members, questions?
Can you tell us a little bit about the new discussion on DAP placement?
Yes, ma'am. So I think one of the most significant pieces of legislation came in regards to e-cigarettes. So previously, there was nothing that required a placement at a DAP for e-cigarettes, and now any e-cigarette requires a placement. I've been working with our principal at Leo and our assistant principals on a plan of action. Historically, we used ISS as our response when students have e-cigarettes for nicotine. We still have a THC or marijuana level response that's different, that is a Leo placement. But for nicotine vapes, we have used ISS historically. With the legislature changing what was required, we didn't feel like that it was appropriate just to not do anything different. So we are going to install a second offense referral to Leo. Leo, our principal at Leo has created a separate room for a short-term placement. We're trying to be proactive with that placement after the first offense. What we want to do is meet with parents and students and try to educate them about this is the role, this is the consequence coming up, because it's prevalent on our secondary campuses. So we don't have capacity at Leo in order to serve the number of violations that we were likely to have. So we're hoping that proactive piece of meeting with parents and students and educating them about the process will, hopefully, kids will choose not to do it. So that's probably the biggest piece of change that we are, we have a plan for. But until we see that plan in action, continuous improvement, right? We'll reassess and go forward after that. Other questions?
It's not a question, just more of a comment, just to my fellow board members. I had questions in regards to Leo and the dress code in Leo. I know that's been a conversation I brought up last year. I just want to say thank you, Brian, and the principal, Jeff, at Leo. Y'all, they're actually listening to the student voice there, which I think is great. They did a survey this year and got to actually hear from our students on what works there and how has it impacted them. But I think what I loved most is I know Leo is not supposed to be a fun place. I get that. Our students sometimes need a little discipline. I get that. But what I love is the connection from the education piece still continues there at Leo, that those students are not falling behind, and we're not putting up any barriers there. So thank you for listening to those students and to those parents. I'm looking forward to see, and I can't believe I'm saying this, but I'm looking forward to see how Leo progresses under the vision of Mr. Sir Clint. So thank you for listening to our students.
Yes, ma'am. A follow up on that. So they looked at those survey results as a staff on Monday when they came back to analyze how to better improve and all of that. So I didn't realize that was the plan until I went over to visit. Yeah, you bet.
One other request. We had talked about this on the phone when I reached out, which is we discussed how to get, recognize those voices that aren't at the table to reach out to those people. And I know that you hear from students, teachers, parents when they're at that table, when they've had an issue or run in and they're working through this code of conduct. But is there any way we can get inside our voice before it gets to that point, or mainly student, teacher voice? And I also got to thinking about our superintendent, Student Council. Not really sure of the places, but I would just like to encourage you to think about voices that aren't at the table to make sure we we get some voices in here as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Okay, there is recommended action tonight?
I move that the board of, board adopt the 2023-2024 Student Code of Conduct. I second.
Christine makes a motion. Francesca seconds. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Six in favor. Any opposed? One opposed. The motion passes.
Thank y'all.
All right, we're going to move on to Item 6B, our governance and our legislative committee update. Mr. Koby Nichols, come on up.
Good evening. How's everybody doing? Is there a way for me to change the slides, Bruce? So I thought for tonight, and what your legislative committee and I discussed, we would go through sort of a high level, what happened during the legislative session. So we'll get started. I'm not going to belabor a lot of, a lot of points, but again, high level. You know, there was a lot expected this session. We had a record surplus. There was a lot of stuff going on. So this is kind of some of the areas that we thought we would see some significant legislation as we move through the process. And obviously, you know, you have a $30 billion surplus. You think, you know, school finance is going to be a big topic of discussion. Obviously, we all know the human capital issues that we have in public education, whether it be teachers, food service, bus drivers, you know, everyone that makes this this machine work. You know, we were really having struggles there, so we thought we would see some legislation there. Learning lag and what was sort of, you know, left over from the pandemic and continuing, you know, student achievement, and how do we ensure that some of those kiddos that are coming to us maybe that have some of that learning lag, how are we catching them up? And what are we doing there with interventions? Parental rights, same thing. We expected a lot of significant legislation there, and so we'll talk a little bit about that. And then school safety, obviously with the tragedy at Uvalde, you know, on top of what had already happened in Santa Fe, we expected some some significant legislation there as well. So I want to start kind of with the landscape. You know, we had basically on both chambers a lot of new members that were new to public education as a whole. Now, all of you board members have been doing this, and you understand the alphabet soup and all the different things that we talk about when it comes to our kiddos. You know, maybe, and I'm guilty of this as well, we don't appreciate the learning curve that that takes to understand everything that goes into making a school successful. We had a new chair on the Senate side with Brandon Creighton. Again, Larry Taylor, no longer being chair, he'd been chair for several sessions and had a really good understanding. And Senator Creighton, Chairman Creighton did a great job and, you know, has a public school background as well. But again, it's 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 new for him. We also had Morgan LaMontea, Tan Parker, Pete Flores, Brian Birdwell, Drew Springer, and Mays Middleton. We had a new Lieutenant Governor staffer in Chris Duke. Can I say new? Chris has been with the Lieutenant Governor for quite some time and has worked on education issues. So he was pretty familiar with the issue coming in. And then we also had several new staff members, as as most of you know. On the House side, big shakeup there. We obviously had a new chair in Brad Buckley. We also had new members in Charles Cunningham, Cody Harris, Brian Harrison, Cole Hefner, Gina Hinojosa, Oscar Longoria, and Matt Schaefer. Again, some of these members have been around for a while, and you know, Charles Cunningham obviously was a freshman. Brian Harrison was a freshman. But, you know, those other members weren't really in the public ed space prior to this session. So again, a lot of learning that they had to do. We also obviously had a new Public Education Committee clerk coming in with Representative Buckley, but he also had experience with with Chairman Huberty. So we did have some some knowledge base there. No returning staff members, though, to that committee. So I get asked this. I'm a bit of a data nerd when it comes to the legislative session. And I get asked all the time, you know, what what makes this session different? And I feel like every session I've done this, I've said, you know, it's obviously a weird session. But this one really took the cake, and I think the numbers spell that out, right? We had record low passage rates, you know, and it, again, for whatever reason that existed, it did exist. And so, you know, normally, these numbers were hovering in the 20s and even to the 30s. And, you know, that 5,413 House bills filed, I caught myself during session accidentally putting in a House bill 5,000 something on like the 81st session, and nothing was coming up. And that's because we've never gone that higher, high before, right? And so a record number of bills filed, but also, again, a record low number of bills passed. And ultimately, between the two chambers, we saw less than 20%, about 15 and a half percent passage rate total. So appropriations, again, $32.7 billion. At the time that I drafted this slide, we did not have a property tax deal. We now have the property tax still, obviously. So we did use a significant portion of that for those property tax SB 1, SB 2. School safety, I think, you know, in terms of everything that we've discussed, your legislative committee, your board, the school safety piece, I think, was probably one of the hardest pills to swallow because we really expected, you know, something maybe a little bit closer to what House Bill 3 and 13 started out as when they left the House floor, which was $100 per student on the school safety allotment. But that's not what we ended up with. Instead, we ended up with 15,000 per campus and then about $10 per student. And that included 300 million. That's the 300 million, and then there's a $1.1 billion appropriation for TEA grants. So it remains to be seen exactly how that's going to work, how that money's going to flow. But, you know, it is an investment, and it's possible they could still come back and invest more in a potential special session. We'll talk about that. We saw $2.36 billion in the golden penny yield increase. To me, you know, looking at school finance as a whole, that's really the only true increase we saw in school finance was through that golden penny yield, which is set out by statute. It's not something that they affirmatively went and did, but it's still there. 3.2 billion for enrollment growth, again, set out by statute. It's not a true, to me, appropriation that goes on top of what they were already required to do. $60 million for the new instructional facilities allotment, which is on the MNO side, the maintenance and operations side. That is a true increase, and it's it's welcomed, especially in districts like Leander where it's fast growth and we need some help, you know, ensuring our our facilities are built the way they need to be. And then 588 and a half million for TRS Active Care, the Instructional Materials allotment. We've talked about this probably ad nauseum, and I'll go a little bit deeper into some legislation that passed here. But ultimately, we ended up with 1.049 billion, which is a positive, absolutely a positive. But there's an argument that it could have been more, and I'll talk about that. That bottom number represents, in the amount of billions, how much was actually given to public education. We all know how this works, right? The House has their number, the Senate has their number. Normally, we come in between, right? We find sort of the, that's how negotiation works, right? We find the in-between there. That's not what happened this time. The House had their number, the Senate had their number, and then we came with a number that was lower than both of those. So very unique situation, and again, I think, leading to what we'll talk about with the special session. So we touched a little bit on this, just kind of diving deeper. You've probably already heard some of this from some of your safety folks, but there is now compliance requirements. There's an accountability piece to it. There's going to be regional school safety review teams that are kind of stacked on top of what the ESCs were doing prior to this bill passing. They will be housed in the ESCs, but they will be TEA employees. I think that's important. There is a requirement that you notify the agency of any violent activity that occurs. And again, rulemaking is going to be huge in this and determining what exactly that notification process is going to look like. Vendor registry. We all know that with some of these tragedies, there's been a wealth of resources that have come, you know, to our doorsteps, talking about the different technologies that are available, and not saying good, bad, or indifferent. But it's sort of been hard to navigate for some districts. And so what the bill ultimately said is that they're going to create a statewide list of vetted technologies. And if those technologies are of a standard that TEA feels it's necessary, TEA will actually enter into a contract to help lower the price for those districts. That's theoretically how that's supposed to work. Mental health training for all employees who regularly interact with students. That's sort of an increased requirement from what we had previously. Again, the agency is supposed to provide an allotment to cover those costs and give us a deadline for that training. Unless someone can correct me, I have not seen that deadline come out yet, so. And then obviously, the one that's 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 caught all the headlines, which is that each campus is going to be required to have at least one armed peace officer. And so, you know, obviously, that was probably the most controversial aspect of the bill. There is a good cause exception where you have to develop an alternative standard, you know, whether that be the school marshal, if you're participating in that, or wish to participate in that, or the guardian program to help satisfy that issue. So I said I would talk a little bit about instructional materials and technology allotment. I think your legislative committee probably got tired of hearing about this, just like some of the staffers that I have to work on when it comes to this subject. Most of you know that I've been steeped in this for a long time. It's it's a strange system that we have in Texas. This is, this money actually doesn't come from state coffers that we we put, you know, normally see. This actually comes from the Permanent School Fund directly. Half of that money, so there's distribution before every legislative session, half of that money is meant for the Instructional Materials allotment. The other half is for per capita funding, as we call it. The problem was that in the last couple of sessions, we have actually seen a decrease in the amount that we were owed. Even though the SBOE, the State Board of Education, it's now the PSF Corporation, long story. The PSF Corporation would come out with a number that was at that 50% level that equaled X. We actually would end up with Y. And it was unclear as to where in that process that money was going. And at one point, I thought I was losing my mind because I was told so many times that I didn't have the numbers right. But you can see on that chart, I know it's hard to see, sort of, this is actually from the Permanent School Fund. And you can sort of see like, okay, last legislative session before this previous one, we should have received about 1.7 billion for our IMTA. What we actually received was 429, right, million? And so we all knew we took a hit, but I don't think people realize that it was it was not just a 664 million dollar hit. It was a over billion dollar hit. And so we kind of started off that way this time again. We were about a half a billion dollar short. And I will maintain, we are still half a billion dollars short. But one of the things that, with the help of Bruce and others, that we were able to get in to the bill was ultimately, now when they go into these budget conversations, there's going to be a clear illustration of how much money districts are owed from the PSF so that there's no even potential for hiding the ball as we move through the process. And so if it's 575 million, that's the number that will appear in the budget. And if they're going to use it for something else, they'll tell us that too, right? And so it just kind of creates transparency, you know, similar to what districts have to do to illustrate how they're spending that money, right? Same level of transparency. Sixteen oh five also created this high-quality instructional material grant program, which ultimately says that, and I will add that the adoption process and proclamations for materials is going to work different than it's worked in the past. It's now more of a collaboration between TEA and the State Board of Education. This high-quality sort of standard is being defined by a rubric that's built by both entities. And so the idea is that, obviously, high-quality instructional materials equals, you know, higher student achievement, that would be the theoretical purpose, right? And so the idea is that if you decide to adopt as a district those high-quality instructional materials, you will be entitled to an additional forty dollars per student. If you adopt those materials in their OER, or open education resources, and you need to print those resources, then you will get an additional twenty dollars per student to print those resources, and that's per year. So it's a significant amount of money. The bill costs somewhere between seven hundred and eight hundred million dollars. And so this was, this is a big movement, we've seen this across the country, we've seen this in other states like Louisiana. And so this is a little bit different in that in some of those states, this is required, you're required to adopt these high-quality instructional materials, especially if you have, you know, failing ratings and whatnot. It's not required here, but obviously, there's a pretty big financial incentive. I'll also add that, and Bruce and his team were helpful in this as well, that there were some issues with contract language in the bill that basically said, you know, at one time, the bill basically said that anything non-instructional couldn't be, a teacher couldn't be assigned anything non-instructional unless it was in the contract. It was reduced at kind of in the final hour to only lesson planning if you're using the high-quality instructional material. The other sort of more logistical issue was that they were going to make this occur for this school year, and so we had to explain to them, contracts went out, you know, last year, we can't just come in and amend all the contracts, it just wouldn't work. So we were able to get that changed, and I think the bill is a lot better, especially now from where it started. And so we'll see, you know, obviously, we'll be tracking throughout the years how this ultimately impacts students. Property taxes, you know, there wasn't a whole lot of talk about property taxes this session, no, I'm just kidding. This, obviously, was a huge issue, you know, and state like Texas that does have a high property tax system with the caveat that, obviously, we have a two-legged stool, some would argue, of just sales taxes, just property taxes. You know, this is always going to be a big issue. And so, you know, I think all of us thought, this is going to happen. We knew it was going to happen, but it was the how is it going to happen? And that how question went on and on and on until, you know, the night before, I think, I think the tweet by the governor was the night before, one of the major deadlines, and that was sort of the first public indication of where the governor was on these issues. And so you had the House with one proposal, you had the Senate with one proposal, and you had the governor with a basically completely different proposal at the end of session. So time was not on our side. So it kind of all fell apart, and you can kind of see the evolution there. You know, the House was centered on tax appraisal caps, and the Senate was a no-go from the very beginning on that. And so the Senate was focused on homestead exemptions. So then we came back towards the end of session, and the House said, fine, we'll do appraisal caps, but we're also, you know, we'll do the hundred thousand dollar homestead exemption with the appraisal caps, and then we'll also do a fifty, fifteen cent rate buy down, right? And the Senate said, no cap, that was it, no cap, hundred thousand dollar homestead exemption. So then we get into the first called session, again, another sort of, you know, iteration of those negotiations. And then finally, we ended up with the deal that ultimately got signed, I think on Wednesday in New Caney, which is ten point seven cents in compression, a hundred thousand dollar homestead exemption, and then, and we may have to get Pete up here to explain this part, I'm still not completely sure how this is going to work, but a twenty percent appraisal cap for commercial, mineral, and non-homestead residential properties of five million and below. So everyone won and everyone lost. It was, which is, again, the nature of negotiations, and so that's sort of where we ended. Now, teachers. When I sent this to Bruce, Bruce said, Colby, you left teachers off. And I said, yes, I know. We did not have any significant legislation that impacted teachers one way or the other. And so I think this is the best illustration, again, everyone, I think it's a horribly kept secret that we're coming back at some point for a special session. And so I do think we're going to have these discussions again and what that means, but for now, we are where we are, and that is no real estate initiatives or support to increase compensation, to lessen, you know, burdens, to, you know, impact discipline, whatever it might be, whatever the vacancy, teacher vacancy task force offered as solutions. That report is virtually unused at this point, frankly. So that's where we are. So what lies ahead for public ed? Again, I think you're, and I think the Speaker even said it at an event, Speaker of the House, you know, that October is probably what we're looking at, we're looking at something in October. I think you're going to see a report by the committee that the Speaker put forward here in the next couple of days, it's due, I think, on the thirteenth, but it's probably going to come in the next couple of days. I don't know that there's going to be anything revolutionary in that report that makes every Texan go, oh, my gosh, we got this solved, you know? But I think there is going to be a lot of discussion, and partly, again, bragging on Bruce, but the comments that he had at the Legislative Committee hearing, and he and many others about not just ESAs and vouchers and those things, but accountability, finance, you know, student issues, I do think that that whole hearing was pretty, you know, those two days were pretty well-rounded and talked a lot, a lot about a lot of issues. So I think the report will reflect that, if I had to guess. So, yeah, I think October, you know, there was a Houston Chronicle report out, probably on, you're shaking your head, Tuesday or Wednesday, I can't remember, it was one of those two days. And I think the quote by one prominent, you know, Republican that's been in public ed since his time and, you know, getting elected, he said, I think we're going to see Christmas trees go up and come down, you know, in the amount of time that we take to work on this. And so I don't have a crystal ball, can't tell you, but I know we're going to be meeting, and I know it's going to be an intense discussion, but I don't know that a lot's changed since we left. And so, you know, I think the big three, the governor, Lieutenant Governor, and the Speaker are on the same page, you know, when it comes to the property tax, they got there. This is such a big issue and historic issue that I don't, I don't, I don't think that's where we're at on that, so it's going to take some time. Any questions?
I just wanted to do a shout out for our Legislative Committee. The meetings have been intense and frequent, and we didn't get that long of a break. After session, we went into special sessions and still was discussing things, especially with property tax and when it was coming out, finally came out, and we're going to be busy again.
Yeah, and I know we had discussed this in our meeting today, and I needed to cover it, and I completely forgot, but there is an element of that property tax where you all are going to be responsible, I say you all, the district's going to be responsible for part of the calculation for the election for those new, three new citizen members of the appraisal district. So I know Pete has gotten some more solid information on that, but just FYI.
And then, one of the things I just wanted to go back to, you mentioned about IMRA, the whole new process, the SBOE and TOE is going for high-quality instructional materials. And I just want to make sure, because you mentioned for several years, Commissioner Maras said his goal is four years to finally have it completely rolled out for all of them. So I just want to make sure we underline that, that it is going to be a long process as we go through IMRA.
Yeah, and it won't impact 2024 proclamation, I think that's really big. But, you know, after that, it is going to be available, I mean, there's, just obviously the resources and the materials that they've been able to vet will be limited at this point.
And then my last question, Article three with property tax is, do you find communities, people are confused because that, or do you think there's going to be more confusion since the property tax break that's going in is actually being calculated, I would argue, under Article three? So it looks like there's more funding going to education, but it's not really more funding going into our classroom? And are you seeing that now, or do you think that's going to be more confusing as we go along?
Yeah, I've had some folks in the general public ask me some of that, and I do think there is a point of confusion there. You know, and I don't know, you know, I think folks need to keep those, I'm not going to say keep those two items separate because they're obviously linked. But, you know, this is property tax relief, this is not funding for the classroom, those are two very different things. And again, in October, and every stakeholder, you know, whether it be from the education side or from the policymaker side, everyone has said, we know there's more funding still available in the budget, we know there's more to be done. So I think, yes, that's an important distinction, that that is, again, very important, property tax relief is very important, but it is different.
No other questions? Thank you, Colby, appreciate it.
Y'all have a good one.
Dear Madam President, I'd like to put on the agenda for the next meeting, the Level Three grievance I made against the Board on June thirteenth, 2023. Can I get a second?
And I think Board members don't make, according to our Board policy, Board members, I think you have that, Anna?
We are allowed to, at any time, to submit into the next meeting, a agenda item.
Absolutely. If you get a second, that your complaint can be on the agenda, it's not a grievance, but if you get a second, then we can, in one of the upcoming agendas, we would, we could put your complaint if that's what the committee, the executive...
It is a Level Three grievance, and I'm hoping for the next meeting, please.
Hold on one second. We should consult with our Board attorney about that and get back with you. Do we have our guest here for our bond oversight? We do, okay, well, we will move on to Item C, I'm sorry, six C one.
Madam President, Board members, and Dr. Gearing, we're here this evening for a bond oversight committee recommendation. Our bond oversight committee did meet in July, and we had fifteen members present, and so John Lux is our chairperson, and he has a presentation.
Madam President, Board, Dr. Gearing, good evening. Let me see if I can just go to the right. Okay, just kind of a, again, a oversight or a high level of the responsibilities for the bond oversight committee, and I'll read it, not to bore you, but read it for made them, just so that we know. Review and consider the use of unspent bond funds, and those may be multiple years. So the one that we're bringing tonight is from the 2017 Bond Fund, not the one that just passed, but from 2017. If the Bond Oversight Committee, or the BOC, recommends the use of unspent bond funds, then the chairperson, myself, shall make the recommendation to the Board of Trustees for consideration. The LISD administration will add the agenda item to an upcoming board meeting tonight for the Board to consider this recommendation. The Board of Trustees will have the final decision. So tonight, what I'm bringing to you, I think, let me see. Trying to look at the printer line item, I'm sorry. Oh, it's very, the very last line, that technology printers, where you can see there is a value of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and that was from the 2017 bond. Obviously, there was printers that were purchased during that period of time, but as, as technology has advanced and so forth with cloud computing and so forth, there's less need for printers. So obviously, we don't want to go spend money on printers that are just going to go sit and not be used. So that was brought forward from the district that we reallocate those, the printer funds of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to, to projectors for the current, now, in the, in the current bond, there are money for projectors, but unfortunately, we're kind of in a gap period where there are allocations for projectors, but there's, what's that? Panels, we're going to have, go to panels, but there are classrooms that currently have projectors that don't work. So as we start to phase in the panels, we don't want to have classrooms without any means of projecting, either via panel projector. So what we're recommending to the Board is that we take that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the printers and reallocate that for projectors. And it's a smaller number, but again, unfortunately, it's a gap. You know, we do have funding for panels later on, but again, we don't want to purchase earlier when we can do a bulk purchase of the panels later down the road, when it's, when we've actually planned that and allocated for those to roll out. So that's kind of the idea, I don't know if there's any questions on, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add, Jimmy, or...
I move that the Board approve the bond oversight committee's recommendation to transfer a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar bond project savings to technology to purchase projector replacements.
I second.
Christine makes motion, Francesca seconds, is there any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor? Seven in favor, motion passes. Thank you, thank you for your work. At this time, we are going to, oh, sorry, we're going to go on a ten-minute break. At this time, we are going to, oh, sorry, we're going to go on a ten-minute break.
All right. Okay, we are back from break at eight twenty-five. And we're going to move forward in our agenda, we're going to go back up to six B two, and this is the TASB delegate appointment.
I can, I can preview that as a legislative committee, we, we've discussed what that means to be at the TASB delegate assembly. I am a member of the legislative committee for TASB, where we talk about, with all trustees across Texas, what are the legislative issues that all school boards are focusing on? And you can pretty much guess at this last discussion I was at, assessment and accountability and finance, we're at the top. And let me tell you what's at finance, when you say finance, we're talking about the people in our system, we're talking about our teachers, we're talking about our students. And so when the delegate assembly happens, it's a follow-up from the board work that I had just done a few weeks ago, where trustees from all across Texas go, and they look at the legislative initiatives and go, yes, this is something, or no, this isn't. They have a discussion about what are legislative concerns. That being said, I think that it was a good idea if we continue to follow by having somebody in our legislative committee who's been following these issues carefully as a delegate. That being said, we've had Anna last time, so I would move this time, I'll put a motion out there, and then we can go from there, we'll see if we get a second, if not, y'all can make something else. I move that Gloria Gonzalez Delacchia be appointed as LISD's delegate, and Anna Smith be appointed to LISD's alternative representative for the 2023 Texas Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly.
I second.
Trish made a motion, was, I wasn't sure, okay, sorry. Chris made a second, is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, all those in favor? Six in favor, any opposed? One opposed, motion passes. All right, we're going to move on over to six B three. Six B three is the board member, um, representation on our board and district administrative committees. And we're examining those because after our executive board reorganization, there are some positions where the board president needs to serve on those committees. And so I moved on to different committees, I, I'm on those committees, and I have left other committees. So there's been some organization there, and it's an opportunity for all of our board to take a look at those, and, and if there's any discussion, we can have a discussion about that.
I don't believe we need a motion for this, so it's just a discussion.
I had, I had a question, I'm noticing SHOC, we have two board representatives, is that normal for SHOC, or do we usually have one?
We usually only have one, but it is fine for us to have two if that's what the board chooses to do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion questions? All right.
And so where it says Policy Review, Policy Review Committee Chair, that it's TBD, is it just something that amongst ourselves we'll end up discussing later on?
I was the policy chair, and since I've rolled off of that committee, and the committee members on there will, will make that decision as their chair.
Maybe rock, paper, scissors or something.
All right, if there's no further discussion, then we will move on to six B four, which is our board operating procedures. Holly Wardell, our board counsel, is going to help guide us through some of this.
Sure, would you like me to start, Anna, or would you like to as the, the chair?
I'll start, and then you can come in. Okay. So this is a follow-up, for those that are not familiar, we, on our December board retreat, we had two days where we all got together as a board, and on Saturday, we really went over our board operating procedures. Holly, you did a fantastic Jeopardy game, I remember Paul won that game. It was a, it was a good day, but for someone who loves board operating procedures, it was a good time to really dig into and to really figure out, how can we get our board operating procedures to be efficient, but have a strong foundation going forward? Because this is how we operate as a board, this is what keeps us in check, this is what keeps our board meetings going. So these board operating procedures are quite important. And I'm proud of this board for taking it on because we have been able to get them updated to current, and to really, I think, it helps streamline and make an efficient meeting. Holly, you want to take it away?
Sure. So hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to review the proposed changes. The, there's some serious reorganization, just moving some things around, so there's, there are some substantive changes, but mostly it's reorganization. That you will see towards the beginning, that there is a note about how this has been reorganized, it's been reorganized into six sections. That is effective governance, new board member orientation and board officers, board meetings, committees, evaluations and training, and board relationships. And then you go through there, there is a new section on board member conflicts of interest that, that I would draw your attention to, there's also a new section on board members visiting facility, district facilities. And I would just say that any motion, you know, if you're going to approve these tonight, that a motion should include the ability of the executive assistant of the superintendent to correct any typos or that we may find in there, because there are a couple of spelling errors that we were, that we hadn't caught when this went to press. So I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you might have about any of these provisions. I know there were a couple of areas, I think, Anna, that, that we wanted to talk with the whole board about. You have to, may have to refresh my recollection on that.
I apologize. I know, I need my glasses, I apologize, guys.
I'll start you at the part where we look into effective governance. You'll notice the first sentence, effective governance, and again, we're trying, we've got the, the part where we've done corrections and we've underlined it. Remember, we're volunteer board, so we did the best we could, but you can look at both of them to compare. But if you look at the top of effective governance, it has our board purpose statement. This is what Dr. Grissom has been working with us on through some meetings, talking about what ultimately is kind of our purpose of the board of trustees, using the theory of action, the board of trustees do this, and the superintendent does this, then we'll see this difference in the classroom for our kiddos and for our teachers. We also have down towards the bottom of our governance, effective governance portion, where we say that the board is committed to utilizing the tools of continuous improvement, such as plan, do, study, act, and quality tools, which includes, but not limited to, our consensograms, our plus deltas, you are all familiar with these, we even have seen them in several meetings, in order to be efficient and as effective as possible. Continuous improvement, and as we've all talked about, the board's theory of action is going to be the framework by which trustees do their work. The board continues to use continuous improvement in setting and review progress as a district. And so that's just kind of a, a big point to kind of hone us all into, like, we've been doing this, but we put it now in print, and that's where it is. Do you want to take it away, Anna?
Yeah, I got it. I think also, like, what Trish was saying, it's important for us, one thing I saw leadership this weekend was, or this weekend, this past week, is making sure our staff and our educators see the work that we do here streamlines down to them. And we're actually seeing that happen now, and so for us to be able to practice this theory of action that Ms. Grissom has put forth, it's kind of a powerful thing, I heard from staff members that got excited, knowing, hey, the board's doing some of the work we're doing in exercises, and it's just really reaffirming the work that they're doing at the local level, and it's how it's trickling down. The one thing we did have a discussion on was on page eight, number seven, it's under placing items on the agenda. Number seven, board members are encouraged to advise the board president, superintendent, or board contacts of questions or concerns on agenda items before their meeting. What we're trying to do is make sure board members are ready for the meeting. So as such, board members will attempt to have all questions regarding regular agenda items submitted to the superintendent or appropriate staff forty-eight hours before the called board meeting. We understand questions come up, I'm one of those people that I like to process later, and then I'm like, hey, Jimmy, I have a hundred questions. However, in order for us to respect our staff's time, but also ensure that we have an efficient meeting, we're asking board members to do their homework before then. That doesn't mean you ask all your questions and you stay silent off the board, just means that you get to dig in a little deeper, get that information you need, so you have that information prepared, but it also is, so we also have to make sure our staff is ready, so that we're not throwing a curveball. But most importantly, we have all the information we need as we set up here to make the right decision on when we vote.
The other one is on page twelve, and we'll talk about voting, and we've talked about this before, as far as processes of board. When we vote, sometimes there'll be our staff that comes up here, and they give us a great presentation, we'll have questions about the presentation. That is okay to have questions about the presentation. But then, once a motion is made, that's where you can discuss, like, what it is you're voting on, what's going to happen in that motion, all your questions there. That's also the time where if you're going to vote no, or you're yes, and you want the community to know, you want to add that transparency, that's where you add it. Once the voting process starts, where the president calls and starts asking for yays and nays, and those who abstain, or, that's not the time. that's not the time for discussion. All the discussion either happens, one administration presents because you have a question about the presentation, or once the motion is done, you have your discussion before the president calls for the vote. We expect the president to not jump to the vote too quick, so we can do that. But if we're not, then you call the vote and we go. Are there any questions about that?
The next section we really cleaned up was committees. You'll notice we have internal board committees. Those are the ones that we serve as chair, and it's made up of three trustees. An important thing that we have, we realized is, you know, we all sit on these internal committees, long-range plan, policy, board operating procedures. And we really want the community to know what happens in these meetings. It's important. And so just to add to another layer of transparency, and y'all, sorry, but this is something we suggested, but we are asking for the chairs of our internal committees to keep meeting minutes as well as attendance of each board member. And this way, our community is aware of what's happening in those internal board meetings. And we are asking our staff to post those notes on the internet, the internet, on our website. Again, going back to full transparency, that way, you know, when we're working on board operating procedures together, I hope we are not bringing this back up, by the way, for a whole nother year. But if there is a concern when we meet, the whole purpose of that is to ensure that the community knows what goes on behind closed doors, that they're aware that we're working for the district and for the kids, and that we're truly trying to make it as transparent as possible.
That being said, we also know we're a volunteer board, and so your minutes can be concise. We've already started doing it. But the most important thing, I think, is for our community to be able to see, yeah, they did meet. They are meeting. They didn't just go make this up on the side.
And I think it's also important to hold that accountability to our board members. You've been elected by the community, and our job is to sit on these internal committees to do the work. And so we're gonna show attendance. We're gonna show what's being said. And like Trish said, it's just gotta be a couple of sentences, three, four sentences, just to get the point across.
I'd also point out that your internal board committees are advisory in nature. They don't make decisions. So if they have recommendations, that will come back to the full board to approve.
And I think that's a great segue into how some of the board operations were developed in that questions can go to Holly, they go to Cindy, and we'll hear questions about board ops. But just if y'all send in a question, we're not gonna be able to reach back out to you and tell you what work we did or didn't do. It's only when we come into this meeting that we can talk about it. It's one-direction communication. We're not gonna be able to follow up.
And just to add to that, we only had one board member submit submissions, request to add to board ops. All we had is one board member. We go into district citizen advisory committees. We're really, again, just trying to streamline it, but most importantly, ensuring our board members show up and are being fully transparent and making sure the work that we're doing there is aligned with what we're trying to do as a district. We are asking for attendance as well. Board members knowing what district committees they've sat on. We've asked for our district to take attendance for board members, if they don't attend, and who is attending. Again, going back to full transparency, making sure the board members are doing their job as a board member.
I have a question on that one.
Yes, ma'am.
If we have conflicting meetings, how would you like us to, or how should that be handled? Can we just follow up with the district chair, so that way we can see what went on at the meeting?
I mean, yeah, things are gonna come up, right? I have four kids at three different schools, and there's gonna be times when I've gotta be a mom and I can't go to board ops procedure. But I think that that line of communication with your board chair, and also if it's a district committee with that district liaison, I think that's what we're trying to establish, is ensuring we're keeping that constant connection, because things are gonna come up. We're volunteers. We know that. We all have busy lives. But I think the point is, is trying to make sure we're not wasting staff and also our community members who show up to these meetings' time, and just trying to make sure that we're doing our job and showing up. So, yes. Page 16, Board Training Development.
I mean, well, before that, it's just a similar standard that the community members also held to, because there's a role that is kept to determine who shows up. And so it's just doing the same thing for the board members.
You're absolutely right, Shawnee. We actually have it in some of our charters. If a community member misses two meetings, we've asked administration to let us know, so we could possibly replace or reach out. So you're absolutely right. It is just streamlining it to ensure that we're on the same level as our community members. Absolutely. Board Training Development, if y'all can take a look at it. Again, we just really cleaned it up. The big thing of this is we're really encouraging our board members to go out and get training. That is how we learn. This is how we improve ourself. And there was a big discussion on, you know, what do we want? How do we want this training? What trainings do we do? Because, I mean, let's be honest, we don't need to go to every single training that they offer. I get it. I love learning. I love it. But in order for us to ensure that we're being financially fiscal with our funds, as you see, we are asking for our board members, if you would like to go to an extra training, we're asking the board members to bring it to the board for a vote. We've listed some items, some entities that, you know, we may attend any training, but if there's extra training out of there, we are asking board members to make it an agenda item. Is that correct? So you'll send Gloria and Bruce an agenda item for what training you want, and it'll come in front of the board, and the board will decide whether or not that training is needed.
Well, that person would ask for an item on the agenda, and they would need a second.
Correct.
And just to be clear, these are education-based trainings, not just willy-nilly whatever you want.
Correct. And it all goes over that in our board training developments. You're not allowed to take cooking classes?
Yeah, the entities are labeled there, you know, Region 13, CTSBA, TASB. And then also, it's listed, you know, if there's a different training, that's when you would need to ask for that item on the agenda, get a second. So it would come before the board. So if you were to get a second for a cooking class, then it would be voted on in front of anyone. Not that anybody would do that, but just if it was an entity that's not specifically listed in here, then we would.
And since we're talking about cooking classes, we'll keep with the example. Also notice that it talks about we should be taking trainings that follow up with our State Board of Education to the school board development framework. We do an evaluation. We just got done with that a few months ago, where we, as a board, looked at areas that we want to develop more and continuously improve as individuals and as a board. So I would hope that as we're looking at trainings and conferences we go to, we can like look at those items and say, okay, these trainings actually meet these needs for us as an individual or as a board.
Page 18, we have board relationships. Again, just going over what our relationship is, what we're held to as trustees. One thing is, you know, trustees shall not use their position to interfere with the day-to-day operations of the school district. Trustees who violate this policy will be subject to disciplinary action and up to including censor. Again, it's making sure trustees stay in their lane. We're not here to come after staff. We're not here to be the boss of area superintendent. Our job is to govern this district.
A little grammar note on that one, that three and four, is that really one number? Because that number four sentence sort of goes with number three, so I'm just curious if the...
Holly, can you make note of that, please?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Christine.
Section, I'm sorry, page 20, Board Member Visits to District Facilities. So we changed from school campus to district facilities. If y'all can just please go over that. You know, we really didn't change anything, just kind of more streamlining it. We are asking for board members, you get invited, we all get invited to events, we all do. You need to let Cindy know. We have to avoid a walking quorum. This is the only way this is gonna work. We've got to ensure that Sydney is aware, sorry, is aware we're at. But most importantly, sorry. Again, we're trying to avoid walking quorum. We're asking, again, any public event, reception, groundbreakings, dedication, ribbon cuttings, any campus event where a trustee will be on a district facility. You need to let Bruce and Cindy, Cindy know, sorry. I've given you a new name. If you wish to visit a district facility, again, you gotta let our superintendent know, y'all. We're not here to just roll on, and again, we're not here to observe staff. We're not here to get any gotcha moments. We're here to serve this district. We're all parents. Some of us are parents in this district. We realize we're gonna be at open houses. We realize we're gonna be at band events. I know some of my board members might disagree with me, but I know if I'm at an open house, and I am at a pretty big middle school, I'm gonna wear my name badge, because I don't want our staff members to feel like they got in a gotcha moment. And so I was gonna bring this up. You know, it's not in our board operating procedures. But as just good faith, if my board members, you know, if you feel comfortable doing that, I understand you're there as a parent. But we're asking board members to please wear your badge if you're at an event, like an open house, not a parent-teacher conference, where we're one-on-one, but a big event, open house, a band event, something like that. Just so, again, we're not there, you know, getting people in a gotcha moment. Because there's been times when I've had a teacher come talk to me, and they had no idea who I was, and I'm like, oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry. Again, just trying to streamline the system to ensure we're not putting people in an awkward situation.
And I do think some of this will be case by case. I mean, there are some events where I've been at, and if I'm wearing a name badge, it makes it like, oh, the trustee's here. I'm like, look, give me the mop. I'm here to clean up. That's my job. I signed up for that. And there are other times, though, where I've been at a huge volunteer event, where we've had organizations all coming together, and if I didn't have a badge on, I had an employee of the district talk to me, and then I realized, oh, you know, I look different. I'm much more beautiful in real life than on camera, and they probably don't recognize me. So, you know, put on my name tag. It's like, oh, that's true, you know. So it is a case by case. I think the more you get used to being in our community, the more you can figure these things out.
I know. She's saying some disagree, because I don't like to wear mine, because I feel it's like I'm a board member, and so I never wear mine to, if I'm there visiting my, if I'm there for my kid's event, if I'm there coaching, mentoring robotics, I feel like I'm just here as a parent. But I do hear what you're saying, and there are times where someone will start, and I'm like, oh, I'm a school board trustee. And they're like, oh. So I think it really is a case-by-case basis, because there's times where I just wanna be a mom. I'm just here to be a mom and cheer on my kid's team, and I'm not here as a trustee. And so I don't wanna bring, I don't want that in that space, right? So I really do think it's this balance of really determining when it's appropriate. So just verifying, you do not have to report to Cindy when you're there as a parent. It is really when you are there as you've been invited in a district capacity.
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
I do actually want to clarify that, because some of the events that I go to as a parent are involving a quorum number of board members, because everybody goes to like the band stuff. I'm assuming that's an exception.
We still need to probably let Cindy know. So like March, what is the big band thing?
Festival, festival.
Sorry, I'm learning new band mom.
But festival is a great one. I do, I let Cindy know.
That's when we do need to let Cindy know.
Okay.
And board members, when we show up at these events, and we know Cindy's told us there's gonna be a quorum there, that means don't talk about just the weather. Talk about your kids. Talk about, right? That's what it means when we have a quorum of board members. There's no discussion about our meeting.
Yeah.
All right, next.
Page 21, Media Increase to the Board. Just if y'all could please take a look at that. Nothing's really changed, except, you know, we're just, I think we're adding in, what did we add in, Holly? The board president may select to appoint a different spokesperson for the board, I believe.
Right. Can designate somebody to be the board spokesperson in the event that you need somebody to respond other than the board president, and you don't have time to have a meeting to take formal action on that.
Can it also be, if it's specific to a committee that the board president is not serving on, and you think that the chair of another committee would be better at addressing that? Or are we limiting that?
No.
Okay. All right, just making sure.
We made it very vague just for that reason.
And all the items that you see were moved, if you'll look, they've been replaced kind of upstream, yeah, so there's a streamline.
Okay. Yeah, I know that there was some confusion, I think, with our public. They were saying, oh, my gosh, they've removed this entire section? So those sections were not removed. They were removed from that place and the document implies under a new header.
Correct.
Thank you.
We're just streamlining it to make it look nice and pretty. But most importantly, it needs to be organized. I mean, again, if we're, as a board, we're gonna be following these board operating procedures. They need to be streamlined and pretty clear as to what they're asking the board to do. Page 29, at the very bottom, Addressing Board Member Violations. Y'all can please check this over. We added section B. Again, just bringing clarity to the board. Right now, the current board ops basically say, upon affirmative vote of a simple majority, the public censures a defending member of the board. Nobody wants to censor a board member, correct? And I think for us, it's trying to find every single opportunity before the board has to do that to a board member. And as you see in option B, we've kind of laid out corrective action steps. They're not unlimited, you know, they're including but not limited to. And you also notice on three, four, five, six, and six, those can only happen within a simple majority of the board vote.
These items that you'll notice on here, some of them, as Anna and I were looking at different board operating procedures, we also went to the state legislative budget board. They do different reports for school districts on governance. And whenever your governance gets wonky, if you will, you have board relationships not working, or board overstepping role, they have certain things that they recommend to the board, such as look at your training. There was a whole lot of emphasis on going back to your training. Focus on your kids. Focus on the students. Get back to basics. And so that's where some of these items were taken from.
And page 33, the very last page, you notice, this is new. Normally, each trustee just signs it and date, and we don't see the page again. Well, one thing we are asking to do again is each trustee will sign this, and this page will go on the website. So our community is aware that our board is going to follow these board operating procedures to ensure that we have proper governance and we know how to efficiently run a meeting. Trustees can choose not to sign it. That's on their term. They get to tell the public why they're not signing it. I encourage our trustees to sign it, but it is what it is.
It's accountability. I can guarantee you, if I'm not doing something, community will be reaching out to me via email or maybe reaching out to all of y'all via Let's Talk.
Agreed. It's kind of really it. I mean, again, we had one trustee submit in a submission to add board ops. Other than that, we heard from no other trustees. So if y'all have any discussion now, please bring it up. This isn't up for adoption tonight. It'll be at the next board meeting. So Trish and I are ready to hear concerns, thoughts, questions.
No questions, just thanks for all your hard work. I know this is a lot, and I appreciate you guys.
Okay, no other questions. Like Anna said, we're not voting on this tonight. This is the discussion of this, and it will be back for vote at our next meeting.
Just procedural question. Would you like this to come on the regular portion of the agenda next week, or in consent?
I prefer consent unless we have board members who reach out. And until then, I guess we just wait and see till we have the board agenda call.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next item on here, how timely, right? Item 6B5. And I did have a trustee reach out and ask to attend a different training. This trustee was Trish Bode. She got a second, and we're moving this on the agenda. So Trish, if you wanna tell us a little bit about what you're requesting.
Yes. So this is a Raise Your Hand Texas Conference, and they're working on advocacy as chair of legislative committee. We've talked a lot about advocacy. I'm also active in our TASB legislative committee and at CTSBA as president. But I feel like this training, some of the items that we see in here, will help our district. We're talking a lot in various groups about how do we do outreach and community outreach. And there is a heavy focus on this training as far as community outreach, which I think could be beneficial for our community. I will point out that I know I've gone to a couple of the trainings through TASB. Since I am on the legislative committee, all of those trainings, those registrations are already paid for by TASB. So it just kind of balances out. So I have been selecting which ones I can and can't go to, because I am gonna be careful about our funds.
I just wanna add that this was in our board memo, so all trustees had the option to ask to attend. So it wasn't just reached out to Trish. This was, everyone had it in their board memo, I think, about two weeks ago. I move that the board approve the Leander ISD pay the cost for trustee Trish Bode to attend the Texas Trustee Advocates Program sponsored... I move that the board approve the Leander ISD pay the cost for trustee Trish Bode to attend the Texas Trustee Advocates Program sponsored by Raise Your Hand Texas in Austin on August twenty-third to the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three.
I second.
Um, I'd like to abstain from voting, if that's okay.
Absolutely. Anna Smith made motion, Christine Mauer second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor? Six in favor? Any opposed? No. Any abstain? One. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, board. Absolutely. And we are moving on to item C, um, six B five. Oh, nope, sorry, we already did that. C two. Thank you, Jimmy and Ms. Grissom. I appreciate that.
Madam President, Board Members, Dr. Gearing, we're here this evening to discuss the elementary school size and the board has had previous discussions about the size of our elementaries, whether to build eight hundred or a thousand student elementaries. And so tonight, our presentation, the purpose is to share information that has been gathered regarding the options on our standardized student capacity of future elementary design. We will also provide a recommendation based on this feedback from the various stakeholders. And some people ask, why is this such an urgent item? This is the timeline for Elementary Thirty-One. You can see the red box. When we presented this Long Range Planning Committee, it was in July and you can see we're in the design window and we're need to get moving and so we need a decision on what size of school to build. We did do several exercises to look out through our tenure window of data that we have and you can see whether you build an eight hundred student school or a thousand student school with an eight hundred at one of the second schools, you build the same number of schools. And so you're not able to actually see a decrease in number of schools and people say, why? Well, some of that is location of the schools. You're, you're not putting them all in one area and so it, it spreads out and you're not able to take advantage. And if we would have done this possibly back in the nineties when everything was building, you could have had a lot more success with this, with this um thought at the time. And so you can see the difference in the costs, but you can see, and so, you know, there are questions, people think, well, when you're zoning, when we did our zoning exercises and we do every time, you can see some of the key components that we always look at. We look at the data. You know, we have functional capacity of the schools that we have to understand what that, you know, programs are at those schools, how do you use that facility? You can have an eight hundred student school, but if you have a lot of special programs, you might only be six hundred and fifty or six hundred. It truly has a huge impact on our capacity and so we look at that to ensure, every year, we look at the programs that are at these campuses so we can have a good functional capacity. Of course, we get an annual demographic enrollment projection because the data changes, events happen. And so you have to always be looking at the data and consider what's out in the horizon. Of course, the programs, as I mentioned, hundred and twenty percent capacity, we use that and that's a standard that PASA does use also. And people wonder, well, why do you do that? Well, when you have a new school opening, if you're saying it's eight hundred student school and you try to open it at eight hundred, then when you have those eight hundred kids and you have two schools now, you're probably going to have two, two to three hundred kids at one school because, you know, in theory, you might have four hundred at each school, but if you did that, most likely in the future, who, part of those four hundred kids are going to get moved very quickly because of the growth that's incoming. And so when you try to forecast out and zone it, you, you're going to have inefficiencies or you're going to have very unstabilized neighborhoods. And so, and we really want to try to stabilize our zoning. So, and of course, you can see the, you know, portables just are standard of hundred and twenty percent. If you have eight hundred kids at a school and you happen to have eight hundred, our hundred and twenty percent will take it to nine hundred and sixty students. And so to accommodate those hundred and sixty kids, you're going to have four portables at least at that campus. If you have a thousand student school, go up hundred and twenty percent, you have twelve hundred kids, that's going to take five portables at that campus at least. And so it just increases and it's very common to run those numbers. Katie has a program with a thousand student elementary schools. It's very common for them to go to twelve to thirteen hundred students and that's just a lot of, to manage. And so um, of course, the bond schedule impact, it's easy to lay out when you need all these schools, but can you afford to actually sell them and build them when you need them? And then the next question is, if you can, can you afford to operate them? And so you just don't lay out a schedule and run with it. You've got to understand financial impact and that's, you know, what Pete does is look at our debt schedules and what can we afford? And so you've got to always consider those. And of course, when you're zoning, we really want to try to stabilize neighborhoods, the number of moves, because that's a true impact to those families. And so we want to get them moved and try to minimize the number of moves. And of course, fiscal responsibility, we don't want to open schools or build schools if we don't need them, you know, long term. And so we really try to look at all these different things, parameters as we go through zoning and look at that. And so it's really important that we look at those things. Of course, this is the top portion of the exercise we did and you can see where the schools are needed. The first one, of course, is Elementary Thirty and then the next three are indicated there. Well, this is eight hundred. And what we have indicated in our, looking at the data, we indicated, you know, not knowing what's past this ten years, we actually said it appears we're going to have a need for another elementary school past the ten years. I did talk to PASA and I asked them about build out, you know, what's build out past this window? Where are we going to sit? And they said, you know, I can look at areas, it's hard geographically as a district, but your fast growth areas, I can look at what's needed beyond that. And what they said was, we said one school, they said two schools. And they said, when we looked at the numbers, you need another school in the northeast and northwest. Just, we said both areas. We had one area needing another school. They said, you'll need another one in the northwest. And so the numbers, you know, past our tenure window is actually two more schools, but they said both of them need to be eight hundred students. A thousand schools is overdoing it. You don't need the capacity and so don't build a thousand at that point. And so that's, they did run the exercise and look at the build out, which gave me more comfort because we don't know what's beyond this, but she had better feel and she looked at it. And so we did get that from them yesterday. And of course, this is the thousand student elementary school and you can see how the numbers, you know, go out. We have schools that are pressing that. As I have mentioned, you know, it's hard to see. You have just a small trend last couple of years, but what's happening past that window? And of course, as we move out and get annual updates, those outer years now become closer to the, you know, more accuracy. They've always told us zero to five years is fairly accurate. You can, you know, have confidence, but that five to ten, it gives you a glimpse, but it's not a, you know, concrete number. And you've got to always be looking at your data as we get our projections each year and update these tables because that's what you'll see as we get our new projections.
All right, so we knew we wanted to look at this deeper beyond just what do the numbers tell us. And so we took this um to principals and sought feedback. And so if you were looking at a hundred student capacity versus a thousand, what are the things that come to mind as far as that student experience, family experience and, and what are the things that we would need to consider? So um, so you have here just themed out what are the different things that we did here. Um, you know, definitely impact on the student experience as you think about lunches and hallways and transitions and recess, specials, assemblies, it definitely has an impact there. Um, and also, they talked about a sense of belonging. The larger that we get at that elementary campus, it is harder to have those connections. Um, and so that definitely does have an impact on our students. Um, impact on parent experience, right? Um, so again, thinking about that connection with our families. Um, and so you, the larger you get at that elementary campus, which we know is, those connections are so critical. Um, so it just, it's harder. And then also thinking about school-wide events. So when we're inviting families in, what does that actually look like when we have a thousand students with all of their families um in attendance? And, and so you have to start thinking about things differently. Um, campus culture can be connected, can be impacted because of the fact that um when you are larger at an elementary campus like that, you don't always see and get to know the other staff members. Um, instructional impact is you start to look at the, the PLCs and the planning um and you think about guaranteed and viable curriculum and ensuring that alignment across the team. When you have a team of eight teachers, that looks different than if you have a team of three or four teachers. Um, and then also thinking about support for teachers. And we have one instructional coach on every campus, um, as well as one principal and assistant principal. So thinking about what does that look like? Um, thinking about office staff and just making sure, again, as our parents are coming in and um, you know, interacting um with our staff, what does that look like? Again, if you increase that number, um, so just trying to think through those logistics. Definitely would have to increase the number of staff for our specials, um, again, to accommodate the number of students. And then um definitely safety and operations, thinking about arrival and dismissal. Um, our playscapes are not built for a thousand students, so we would have to invest in expanding that, which will be an additional cost that's not factored in. Um, and then parking for events and just thinking about that. So just some, some things that our principals brought forward. So then, um, we also took this to our Long Range Planning Committee, you know, and as a reminder, that is now an expanded cross-functional group. So we have students, which is so exciting to hear their voice in this, um, and we have teachers and we have parents, campus leaders, district leaders, board members, um, and so we put all of this in front of them as well and engaged in a robust conversation, lots of great questions. It was so great. Um, and then asked them, so if, based on what you have seen and heard, what is, what is your vote? Um, what would you recommend? And you can see that is raw data right there, um, that we had asked from them. Um, and I do want to point out, we had one person who did um abstain from voting because felt like needed more time to dig into the data. So I do want to recognize that. Um, so you can see um where, where their votes fell. And we did ask them if they could give us more details, um, why they chose the eight hundred versus a thousand or even the eight hundred with a thousand core. And we just summarized that feedback. Um, some of those are direct statements from their, their sticky notes. Um, what are the things that they feel we need, we need to consider as we look at this? So I won't read each of those, but you can see um what their feedback is. So taking all of that into consideration as we look at what is best for student learning and that bless you and that student experience, um, but also looking at which option is the most fiscally responsible. That is definitely a charge of ours as well. Um, so our recommendation based off of looking at all of that is to set the design at eight hundred student capacity and we are going to open it up for discussion and questions.
So I'll just say that the um, Dr. Grissom is totally right. That Long Range Planning Committee, um, they dug into this. It was really, really great to hear. Lots of questions, lots of comments, um, talked a lot about, you know, if we build it for a thousand, does that mean there will be a thousand? Or do we, you know, it's sort of like the size of the bucket. If you build the bucket bigger, you're going to fill it with more water. And so by saying we want to build it for a thousand but only put eight hundred in it, I mean, that's great in theory, but we also know how fast this area is growing. So um, it was a really, really great conversation and I loved hearing from our students. Um, there was a, a a brand new sixth grader at my table named Peter who just had a lot to say. The, you know, he had, he mentioned that his fifth grade class had um, I forget what he said, like thirty-three students in it. It was a lot of kids and he said it was just a lot of people and it's too much. And I said, good for you for making your voice heard. And so it was really, really great. So I just want to say, um, you know, great job getting all of that feedback and it was a very robust conversation. So I was really impressed.
I had a question um in regards to the numbers listed. Um, where's that slide? Slide six, sorry. Are those, so for twenty-four, twenty-five, you know, I'm particularly in regards to Larkspur and Tarvin. We know we made those early childhood hubs. We know that they are busting out the seams right now with pre-K classes and also with special education, early childhood. Are those numbers factored into this or is this factoring in like the early childhood center, any of that?
This is only K through five.
So those numbers are potentially larger because of those early childhood hubs, is that correct?
We've got, one of the next meetings with the Long Range Planning is talking about early childhood centers. We've got to address that capacity in the north. We've got to relieve, either build additional elementary school or provide early childhood centers somewhere. We've got to get relief. It's part of the plan and we know we're going to have growth. It's a matter of, is it going to be early childhood centers or another school? And so that's, the Long Range Planning Committee is going to tackle that one very shortly.
Okay, that's my question, I guess. Because I mean, we see in the north right now, those, the hubs that we put there two years ago now are causing certain grades to now be in portables.
Exactly.
And so I'm just trying to figure out, I guess, is for my, I, I'm all for eight hundred. And I saw those looks on the principal's face when y'all rolled it out at leadership. There was no way I'm going to say a thousand after I saw those elementary principals, absolutely not. But I guess for me is just trying to figure out, I guess, you know, we, those uh, parents at those campuses in the north, Larkspur, for example, Tarvins, all at third grades in portables, just, I think, just letting them know we do have those early childhood hubs and that conversation is coming eventually. So we can try to figure out relief there and that's what I was trying to get at.
Exactly.
I just want to say thank you and to kind of echo what Anna said, I was also at the leadership when they brought it up to principals and everyone within my eyesight, when the thousand number was brought up, it was a hard no. Absolutely not. And a lot of that was the family engagement portion. So I'm really, really glad to see that because I feel like that's not something that people think about a lot is, yeah, a thousand kids is a lot. But when you have a function for that school and for those thousand kids, you're talking about anywhere two to five additional people, depending on if they're bringing more family members. Where are they parking? Where are they going? How are you fitting everybody in there? That's a big deal because parents don't want to be kept out of their kid's school because there's not room. So I'm really glad to see all this feedback. Thank you so much.
So what I thought was interesting was that it didn't reduce the number of schools that was um required. Um, how, or that would, that would be necessary. Um, however, it's, um, and also the uh, the capacity for the schools didn't, was pretty much the same in terms of the overcapacity. Those that were going to be overcapacity were going to be regardless. So I thought it was, um, and, and that's still far out. So um, looking at just the immediate future, um, it looks like the eight hundred is the way to go, but there still should be another checkpoint at some point down the road to see whether, we, we know that we're going to do that, to revisit this again for those next two.
Without a doubt. Every time we do a zoning exercise and we get our new data in, we'll be looking at it. It's something that we know, you know, I know if, if PASA's correct, we have only five elementary schools to build, to build out, then it's most likely you're going to have less of a chance to build a thousand student school because of location. The, they're just not in the close proximity enough to be able to have that true benefit. And so, but we will definitely be looking at it because you'll see when you have eight hundred, as we look at build out of what kind of numbers are still out there and, you know, if we bump one up to a thousand, does it actually do away with overcrowding at the end? And so we'll definitely look at it.
Um, I have a question, oh, no. I have a question, but I want to follow up on Shawday's statement first. Our motion is the way it's written, has us set it as a standard capacity and it just kind of is in some ways on autopilot, but I think what Jimmy's saying is they will still, administration will still be looking at it and they'll bring back to us if they see any need for changes. Is that correct?
Correct. And plus, the Long Range Planning Committee will not be going away. And so that'll be a constant conversation, I'm sure, with the committee because that's where it needs to orchestrate.
So my question um goes back to when I was, love the discussions. I think it is so powerful um for a diverse variety of committee voices and from different backgrounds and thoughts and all coming together to see this kind of vote is, is just really powerful. Um, but when we were looking at our table, this isn't the graph that we ended up because there were two graphs, right? So we got focused on the other one, if you'll go up with a thousand capacity. And so Jimmy, you and I talked about this over the phone because the question was, as we were looking at this, was oh my goodness, you know, when you look at Elementary School Thirty-One, we're going up over a thousand kids. And so, you know, then the question is, of course, principals are going to say, well, it makes sense to me. The principals will say eight hundred or a thousand, eight hundred. But what happens if you have eight hundred and a bunch of portables versus a thousand? And I think that's And I think that's why we see that discussion started with 800 versus a thousand capacity. Because the way our graphs looked is that our numbers in enrollment were pretty much kind of predicting that would get over a thousand kids for a few years. But when you go back to the other graph, the 800, it shows a lower number. So can you explain that to us?
Well, the, some of it, when you have a thousand students out of 800, and you're looking at zoning numbers, you're pulling different areas. You're expanding your reach when you're doing a thousand. So you pull larger pockets of kids to that school versus at 800, it's, could be smaller numbers. And so we have, you know, you can see some of those schools, you say, well, these numbers don't make sense. It's because of the zoning. When you have those further reaches, you grab more kids into that school, and then you, as it starts going in different directions, you'll see a different fallout, too. And it just becomes harder, especially as you're building out. Your capacity is going to have more challenges of sustaining it, because of, you have nowhere to pull from, especially if we're not regenerating to the south, then you have nowhere to pull but area. And that's, well, we've got to really be careful as a district, as we build out, being very careful of building those schools towards the end. You want to make sure we're going to sustain it, not just for a couple of years, and then have it fall off.
Jimmy, this makes so much more sense. I do think that was a point of confusion, because it didn't make sense. If we thought for sure we were going to beat a thousand, why would we underbuild that way? So that helps when you're thinking about that. I found, as the discussion was going on, I was thinking as a board, thinking about the fact that we want to attract people to our district, trying to attract principals and teachers to a thousand-capacity district, a campus may make it a little challenging. But can you tell me, just, let's make sure we've got a conclusion on the 800 versus a thousand core? How is that different, and why is that not a recommendation from administration?
The, where we looked at, I think, the thousand, you can see on Elementary 32, we actually built in a 800-student school with a thousand core, which is projected for Treviso currently. The reason is, Passa said, there is a track of land. If it doesn't develop, we won't need a thousand students out there. And they're not sure it will. And so they said, you're better off, if you're going to have to go to a thousand, don't build a thousand there, because you might not need it probable. And so we had built this in, and of course, what it does is, it leaves off eight classrooms of the two-story wing. There are eight, four classrooms on each wing floor that are not built, and so you have those that have to be added later. But from the numbers, we, 800 or a thousand, you're going to sit there, build the same number. And so it just didn't make sense to go build, spend the extra two and a half, three million to do the thousand core for additional office staff that you won't have. And so it's just wasted space potentially. And so our thought was, just leave it as it is and make it work.
Quick question about functional capacity. So like with Akin and Larkspur, that have the higher than 800, and they are the current design, can you explain that?
You have basically, let's say, 40 classrooms, on average, of 22 kids. If you filled 22 kids in every classroom, you'd have 880, I believe. And so, depending, and they have usually more than 40 classrooms, I'm just trying to easily make a number, but that's, they don't have a lot of special programs that they're reducing their capacity. And so that, those campuses have pretty much gen ed all the way through, high populations of that, and that's why their functional capacity is higher than the other ones.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
One thing I comment, I think, you look at the comments that are on there, and kind of love seeing that aligned to all of our, you know, all of our boardwork that we've worked on with our board vision and our student profile. I think that larger school just really does impact your student experience. There's less opportunities for a student to be in that leadership role, less opportunities for that student to be in this club. I mean, there's just less opportunity for your students. And so as we look at all of our guiding documents, and you look at the comments that are on there, they're really aligned with that 800 to provide the student experience that as a board we're striving for. So I think it just makes sense.
I move that the board approved the Leander ISD standard elementary design to be 800 students.
I second.
Anna makes motion. Christine seconds. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, all those in favor? Seven in favor, the motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Pape, it's your turn. This is going to be item 6C3.
I'll call Matt Bens out, but I won't call you out, Board President. All right. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Garing, and members of the public. Tonight, we're here to discuss our maintenance and operation and INS total tax rate for the ordinance that we will bring to the board at the next board meeting on August 24th. As soon as the presentation comes up, we'll continue on. But as Colby mentioned, the other one, the other, as Colby mentioned, yes, Colby mentioned there was a lot of changes in the property tax and the different rates and the processes that went through. So I've got a presentation here that talks about, the MNO rate was compressed before, in the original session, it was compressed about a little over eight cents, eight and a quarter cents. When this comes up, it'll show it to you, but we'll just go ahead and start walking through it. It was about eight and a quarter cents, and then we, you know, we're a July 1 fiscal year, we submit all of our ads in the paper and notices and everything in early June. And at that time, even the eight and a quarter cents was still a little up in the air. So the rate that we posted, which is shown later in this presentation, was about, just about one cent less than the rate, not eight and a quarter cents. Well, then, the second session comes around, our state legislature had a second session. They spent a vast amount of time focused on property tax relief, and they went back and forth, back and forth. At the end of the day, it came down to an additional compression. So we had the eight and a quarter, which they confirmed, and then they added additional 10.7 cents, and they left that subject to the 90% equity ban. And all that means is that between the district with the highest rate, the lowest rate can only be 10% less than that. It keeps it within that zone. And there were some other changes that Colby mentioned, increased the homestead exemption from 100,000, or to 100,000 from 40,000. This is subject to a voter approval in November of 2023. Now, as Colby mentioned, he didn't have a crystal ball. I don't have one either, but I'm pretty confident this one's going to pass. If you look back to May of 2022, when there was an election to increase it from 25,000 to 40,000, that one passed 85% to 15. So I think we're going to be on that target. This would be the effective tax rate for the, for tax year '23, which is the school year '23, '24. And then, as we talked about earlier, and as Colby mentioned as well, with the reduction in the MNO rate, obviously that brings in less taxes to the school district. There's a hold harmless provision, both for the MNO side and the INS side. So, you know, as mentioned earlier, our MNO rate was going to go down, which means our local taxes are going to go down, which for us is going to mean our recapture payment will go down. And state funding will go up and don't match, but the bottom line from last year to this year on a per pupil is still the same. So just make sure that everybody understands. I think everybody up here is clear on that, but I just wanted to make sure that, for the community, because it is, it can be, it's confusing. You'll hear legislatures will say, whether intentional or unintentional, hey, you know, we added X number of billion dollars to public education. And true, they did, but they also reduced the local taxes by an equal amount. So some people will hear that and think that, oh, Public Ed got all that extra money, and we really were the same. It was a property tax break. So just to make sure that we're even on that, and make sure everybody understands that. So if you look at the last five years, since House Bill 3 was adopted in 2019, that's when the MCR, the maximum compressed rate process came in. That was a new term at that time. So in 1920, or prior to 1920, the rate was a dollar. That was the rate, and then everybody could add the few gold pennies and copper pennies that they had a successful election, et cetera. So the first year went from a dollar down to 93 cents. We went down seven cents. So if you notice, you look at this, the first year of the biennium is the big decrease, and the next year, there's like a minimal one. And then they have another session, and there's a bigger decrease. So the first year, down seven. Next year, we went down 1.66. Then the legislature meets, the next year, we go down nine cents, and then the next second year of that biennium, 174. So this year is a big drop, because it's the first year of the biennium, once they buy down the tax rate. And this is a fairly significant one. We went down, we're going down 16.59 cents on an MNO rate. Prior to that was, what's on the next slide, but it was, you know, 80, just about 80 cents. So it's a fairly significant amount. And then on top of that, as Colby mentioned, the homestead exemption, probably the largest increase in my tenure, back 2015 or so, there was, or thereabouts, 2015, 2013, it went from 15,000 to 25,000. It was that for a while, then it went to 40, and now it's going from 40 to 100,000. So the good news, as Colby mentioned, the good news on that is, it kind of hits both tiers. If you're a property homeowner, it's a homesteaded property, you get a reduction in your taxes on the MNO side, as well as you get the benefit of having an increase in the homestead exemption. And if you are a business that, you know, obviously doesn't have a homestead, you get a lower MNO tax rate. And if you're an individual who maybe has a home, and also has additional homes for rental properties, or Airbnbs, or et cetera, that are worth less than five million or less, then there is a 20% cap on the property growth, when before there was not a cap. And so that kind of, Colby said, there was, everybody won, everybody lost, kind of similar. I mean, everybody, there was a little, something in it for everybody. I don't know if everybody was gung ho, excited about the final product, but everybody did come out, you know, took a pro and a plus and a minus. And then, as we mentioned, this is with the homestead exemptions, that's some of the largest that we've, we've ever seen. So when you look at our tax rate, I've got three columns on here. I've got 2022, and that's where I'm going to spend most of my time, is the 2022, and then the right side of the 2023. I'll briefly mention the budget notice, but that was just because it was in June, but I felt it was probably most important for most individuals learning on their taxes, focus on what the actual was, and then what the actual will be. So the top section in the blue, this is just the broken down, your MNO rate by your MCR rate, your gold pennies, which we have all eight, and then we have six of the copper pennies. So if you look at 2022, our total MNO rate was .9446, or 94.46 cents. So you look at the 23 on the proposed, you know, after the special sessions, number two, it is .7787. Our INS tax rate is remaining the same, 33 cents, which has been our plan all along. And even with the reduction, with the homestead exemption increasing and our taxable value coming down, and that's a slide coming up, but we are still in a position that that 33 cents will still remain the same. So if you look at the bottom section, you know, originally, we thought it was going to go down, when we put our notice in the paper, 1.02 cents, and at the end of the day, it's going down 16.59 cents. And so our next, our next slide, we'll give you their history here. If you look at, over the last five, seven years, the tax rate has gone down, it was $1.5119, and now we're going down to $1.1087. And breaking that down between MNO and INS, it's 26.13 cents on the MNO side, and all of that is due to compression with the state legislation. And then our INS rate has gone down 14.19 cents. So for the total is the point, or 40.32. So 40 cents decrease, which is a fairly significant, almost 30%, about 25% over since 2017, 18. And so 65% of that decrease is the MNO side, and 35% of that is on the INS side. So if you look at the impact of tax rate on our average home value, so if you look at 22, 23 column, and then we'll, the same as we did on the previous slide, we'll look at a little bit on the budget notice, and mainly on the right side, the proposed. So 22, 23, when we adopted our tax rate with certified values, the information provided to us by the Williamson County, as well as the Travis County, or I think they're called central appraisal districts now, old terms popping out. The market value of the home, our average home, was just under $700,000 in 22, 23. And the average taxable value was $423,000. Then you have, you know, the MNO tax rate breakdown, back then it was 80.46 cents, the MCR, we had five gold pennies, we had a successful Vader, so we added three, and then we got the six gold pennies, sorry, six copper pennies, and then 33 cents on the INS for the rate of $1.2746. So the school property tax on that home for 2022, 23 was $5,392. And that wasn't the total tax bill, that was just the LISD portion on the tax bill. And as we all are aware, that's the largest number on that tax bill. So if you look at proposed 23, 24, now just real briefly, the budget notice column, that information is based on preliminary certified values that we receive on April 30th. So the right column has the updated information, which is based on the certified values that we receive on July 25th. So the market rate actually decreased a little bit, went down to $642,343. The average taxable value went from 423 to 412. Then you have your tax rate, the MCR decrease, the eight gold pennies and the six copper pennies, and the 33 cents INS remain the same, but your total tax rate is $1.1087, which is a 1659 decrease. So the total prop school taxes on that home with that new value is $4,572, or an average decrease of $820. So some of the interesting aspects was, you know, I think a lot of people were, well, why did the, you know, the 423 only drop down to the 412? Why wouldn't it go down 60,000? Because the homestead exemption went from 40, you know, to 100. But you also have to remember, the taxable, the appraised value, still trying to catch up to market, it's capped at 10%. So it goes up, and then the extra 60 comes off, and at the end of the result, on an average, averaged on that case, on this case, for about $11,000. But it did save the taxpayer $820. The next little section, that was mainly, that was, we did talk about both funds, MNO and INS, but this last slide here is strictly based on the interest and sinking. And I didn't want to be outdone by Jimmy and have the smallest numbers, so we put these on there. But this is basically our updated debt schedule. We sold bonds on August 2nd. We will close that deal on August 22nd. So one of the things I mentioned earlier was, there was a hold harmless provision in both the MNO and the INS side. And so what we did in this bond sale is, we are closing on August 22nd, and then a week later, we are having our first payment due on those bonds, just to make sure the first payment is done prior to September 1st or August 31st. That way, it's absolutely eligible for the hold harmless provision on the INS side. Because they kind of, they've mentioned both ones, and what passed was good, but I just wanted to make sure that we met the requirement by having a payment prior to September 1st. So it's just a one-time, kind of an off-cycle payment, but we met with Blake at PFM, and we made sure that we scheduled that and we're in a good position. But as you look, and we've updated the value, the TAV, or the value growth, so originally, we were about 42 and a half, $43 billion in property value, but when the homestead exemption increase came in, that reduced it down to 38.5, or just under 38.5. So our, the growth, the net growth was 2.45% when you reduce the homestead piece, even though, this is excluding the hold harmless piece, that the state is supposed to hold its hold on the MNO and the INS side. So that is not included in here. But even at the 33 cents... But even at the 33 cents, our estimated, basically break even in this next year, I mean, it's fairly close. Again, that's without any state hold harmless piece being calculated in. The next year, we're up about 17 million over, this is not including, this is not taking into account if we do another bond sell the next year, which is within the next 12 to 18 months is our expected goal. And then the two years later, we're right back on track. And so, again, these numbers don't include the whole harmless piece. So, we're in pretty much the exact shape that we had, everything that we had forecasted and what we told our community and our taxpayers that it would stay at 33 cents. And it'll still allow us to pass this bond that was recently passed and do that, go through that process and keep our rate at 33 cents. But other than that, we will, on the next board agenda, we will bring to you the ordinance, adopting the MNO rate and the INS rate, which total rate of $1.1087, it'll be broken down by MNO and INS. And I'm open if there are any questions on our tax rate.
You know, Pete, you did a really good job of presenting it and I really appreciate it. This is very thorough and I get the fact the state has been playing around with these numbers for a while, so it's hard to, you know, fly a plane while you're also trying to learn how to fly it, you know? But I gotta say, some of my constituents are still concerned, while the tax rate is still going down, their tax bill is still going up. And I realize it's doubled from the, you know, the slide you showed just in a few years But I can't go home without at least saying, is there any way we could still make that tax rate lower?
Well, we always try, you know, to provide value and do what's best for our constituents and our district. Anytime we go down on the MNO side, it's not only do we lose local, but then we also lose the state piece on the gold pennies and the copper, and we also lose state funding. Because the state, the way the state system works is, basically, if I'm the state and you're the local community, the state says, when you max out what you pay, what you can pay, then we max out the state funding. If you reduce yours, then we reduce our state funding. Because if that was the case, there's probably not a CFO in the state of Texas or a school board in state Texas that wouldn't have the absolute lowest MNO rate as possible, that the state was going to cover it all for. And we'd do that. And so, so that's kind of, I mean, we're already in a, you know, this budget we adopted this year was 6.5 million deficit. We don't expect it to end the year at that amount. So, I think anything cutting on the MNO side would not be recommended. And then on the INS side, we're at the 30 cents, which was over a 6.24% or not percent, but a little over six cent decrease, or six and a half cent decrease from 49.5. If the values change, depending on what the state hold harmless is, I mean, we obviously look at this every year, but you know, the main goal is not to break the promise of going over 33 cents. Obviously, if there is any way where we could go down, reduce that, we would definitely look at that. I mean, because we don't want to have a tire, we don't want to tax our public any higher than we have to, but we also kind of have to maximize the state funding on the other side of the coin too. So, it's that balance. And so, I think we've lived up to the promise of, I really don't have any option on the MNO side. I mean, I do, but I really don't. I mean, and then on the debt service, we're right at 33 cents, which is what we had promised. And you can set, this year, I mean, it's only 22,000 above and not knowing exactly what the hold harmless amount will be. If I knew that amount, that might be a different, that might come into the equation a little bit more. A year from now, we'll have a much better idea what that hold harmless is and how they're calculating it and I can project it forward and we can definitely reevaluate. But, you know, like everybody in this room, you know, I'm a homeowner, I pay LISD taxes. I don't want to pay any more than I have to, but I also want to make sure that the taxes I do pay are maxing out the state system. And so, I would, at this time, I would say, no, not to lower, but it's always on the table, we're always trying to get the best rate we can and still maximize the funding formulas. I wish I had a better answer for you, Mr. Goutin.
I understand.
And in the appraisal districts or whatever entity it is, puts out the Truth in Taxation website and people would be shocked at how low, how much lower it is considering the lower tax rates and also the 100,000 in homestead exemption. So, it is, it is.
Well, if you look at the board right now, it still has $1.27. Now, once we, on the 24th, and we adopt it, we send that ordinance into the two appraisal districts, then they will update those websites or actually, I think we might, we may have to update those websites. I think we have a login that we do that. And when that is, that, when those rates official, then it will go in and it will look a lot lower than what's in there right now. Because right now, they just put in the last year's rate. So, just in case anyone was listening, I didn't want to go run, look at the websites and say, wait a minute, it has the same. It will have that until we officially approve it. But you're right, once it's approved, it will be, you know, significantly lower.
So, one of the things that I was thinking about, and it goes off of some of Paul's earlier questions about, when you look at our INS, 33 cents, that rate that we have that set at, takes into account our other bond debt that's out there and how we're going to pay off our capacity, and so that impacts our Fitch ratings. And so, I already sent you a request about that, so you want to tell us, how are we looking with our Fitch ratings with all of the changes going on?
Well, I heard a rumor that in the board update tomorrow, there's an update on the Fitch rating. But no, we did receive an update to our rating and my apologies for not getting out in time, but as we were getting ready to do the bond sales, it just, I'll be honest, it kind of fell through the crack on that one. But it is, our bond rating is AA from Fitch's rating, AAA is the highest. Going to be very rare, you're ever going to find a school district get AAA on their own, but we are at the highest rate you can pretty much have on your own. We do have a AAA on our bonds because we did qualify for the permanent school fund from the state of Texas, right about April or so, March, that, up until that time, they were kind of at capacity. And then the powers that be had a little kumbaya meeting and they all came out and everything was great and then they were able to increase the capacity and we were able to get in right into that new capacity and get that AAA rating. So, we've got the best of both worlds. But even with the PSF having the AAA, having the highest rating you can have on your own does make the Fitch, makes bond buyers, it makes other people much more interested and willing to purchase your bonds on the open market. And so, when we did our bond sell, we didn't have any problem selling our bonds.
I loved Slide 5. I think we should just blow that up and put that everywhere. Slide 5 is my favorite. So, you know, I think that's a great visual of, I like the breakdown of the MNO and the INS and I think that's helpful for people to see how those two come together in our tax rate. But I also think it's really important to see that this board has lowered the tax rate for the past seven years. Yes, our taxes keep going up because our home evaluations keep going up and, but I think, you know, we're doing everything we can on that tax rate. So, thank you for breaking it down like that.
I also wanted to add that the district has also, over the last couple of years, the district has put out a lot of information or a lot of videos about really how school finance works. And you talked about that maximum compression rate for the MNO, it's like, that's really the maximum. You go below that, it's on you. And we're trying to pay our teachers more, so we're just shooting ourselves in the foot if you try and go below that. And so, it's just really important for people to know that those resources are out there and then they need to just watch them. And it takes, sometimes it takes several watches because it's, it's, I don't know, it's unlike anything else.
Pete, I recall a few sessions ago, there was this hold harmless, I'm trying to remember what the name was for it, but it's been a few acronyms ago, so I can't remember it. But I remember there was the cliff we were all talking about, the districts were going to get on that hold harmless that the state had offered. And so, then there was this question of if the state was going to come in and kind of hold those districts harmless and, and that's kind of, I guess, what I go back to, because I almost feel like maybe we're reenacting the same thing and that this is what the state has said they're going to do, they are going to hold us harmless. But can you tell me what assurances are, as we're planning out, and we're looking at this tax rate, this tax rate will hold us for so long, we're looking at, we can continue to offer this, but how does this work for a rooftop district, we're not commercial?
Yeah.
And what happens if this hold harmless gets very expensive? What, how are you reading those two leaves?
Are you talking about transitional grant funding? Okay, just make sure we're talking about the same thing. But I'm going to go back a little farther. So, if I, you go back to 2006, 2007, when we, when the state legislature compressed the taxes from $1.50 to $1.33 and the next year to a dollar. It was great, right? I mean, everybody loved it. You got a 50 cent, one-third of your tax rate was decreased and that was '06, '07, '07, '08. Does everybody remember about '08, '09, what happened to property values? And the bottom fell out. And all of a sudden, the state portion, that 50 cents they bought down, got really big, really quick because of the values, the home values just dropped and so it put a lot on the state. So, about, you know, about that time, a year or two later, we, they did a, they went to target revenue, which kind of put in, here's, you could finish, you could get 98% of your budget with about two numbers. I mean, that was how it was. And then they put in the transitional funding shortly thereafter, when they changed the system again. And so, there was always that thought was, okay, you know, for districts that aren't really growing property value wise, they're never, they're always going to have to rely on that transition funding because they're never going to catch up to the new system. And that was a lot of districts. And the cliff was there, then the cliff was moved two years later, then the cliff was moved and then, you know, finally, I think House Bill 3 just kind of came in and kind of like a big reset. I hope we don't, I think a lot of people expect some kind of slowage, if you want to call it down, of the home values, or I don't know if slowage is really a word, but, you know, we just make these words up as I go, you know, but I think there was a slowing down. I think, I have not heard a lot of talk of recession lately, I've heard more of just kind of slowing and, you know, and I got my home value this year, it, the curve was, the trajectory was definitely not the same as it was in prior years. So, if it stays constant and then slowly trickles back up, we would be in a much better position than we were in '06, '07, '07, '08. But you will have, for districts again, that either their values don't continue to increase, it will be interesting, and I use that word very loosely, interesting, to see how the legislature treats those districts. Because if you're a district that your value grows, you know, a lot of my districts in my past were very heavy industrial values and so they would grow, they expanded. But like you said, when you're rooftops, I mean, you're really, if home values don't go up, that's really, that's the vast majority of your property value growth. So, if they do start to, if they stay this flat or continually go up, well, we should be in good shape. And also, the other side of the coin is, how long will the hold harmless provisions hold? They're still doing the INS ones. I mean, they have done all the ones for, when they did from 15 to 25 and from 25 to 40 on the homestead exemption. So, historically, their track record is good. I mean, we'll, you know, we try to say that past performance predicts future performance. But the MNO one, it's always good for a good two, three, four years and then, then they get antsy. And so, we'll definitely watch it to make sure that we do everything in our power to inform you as the board and work with our legislatures, that if we do fall into one of those situations or the market does that, that we let them know and we work with them to try to make sure that we are protected and our community is, and our students have the best education they can have.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate all of those details. We all appreciate all those details. Thank you. It is 9:50 and the board will now go into closed session for the purposes permitted by Texas Government Codes 551.071, consultation with an attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation or attorney-client privileged matter. Also, 551.074, deliberation regarding resignations, terminations, employment, reassignment duties and evaluation of personnel and public officers. 551.0821, deliberation regarding matters whereby personally identifiable information regarding one or more students will be disclosed. 551.074, deliberation and consideration of employment of River Ridge Elementary School principal. 551.074, deliberation and consideration of chief of schools. 551.089, discussion of district-wide intruder detection audit report findings. No action will be taken in closed session. Any action related to closed session agenda items will be taken when the board returns to open session.
to open session. It is ten ten and the board is returning to open session. Board members, does anyone have any motions related to closed session agenda items?
I move that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of Dr. Sally Sosa for principal at River Ridge Elementary School, one-year probationary employment contract for personnel additions as presented in accordance with the salary scale, policies, and contract of Leander Independent School District for the 2023-2024 school year.
A second? Francesca made motion. Trish second. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. All those in favor? Yays. Seven yays. Motion passes. And our board meeting, it is ten, it's so weird behind us like this, right? It is ten eleven and the meeting is adjourned.